At this time, I will go ahead and call our meeting to order. This is the City of Bellevue, Idaho Common Council Meeting, Tuesday, May 27, 2025. Call for order at 5:31 PM. Just a reminder to please turn all cell phones, etc., emergency personnel on silent. And if you're on Zoom, please mute yourself until you've been called upon. Anyone who has a phone call for us?
Here's your money.
Yes.
Council President Che.
Yes.
Want to need?
Yes.
Speaker Morgan?
Yes.
Speaker McReed?
Yes.
Speaker O'Nah?
Yes. Notice of agenda compliance for Idaho Code 74-204. Finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204 within 48 hours prior to the meeting at the City of Bellevue City Hall post office and on the city's website on May 22, 2025.
Who that the notice for the May 27, 2025 meeting is posted in compliance with Idaho Code 74-204? Thank you.
All in favor? Call for conflict as outlined in Idaho Code 74-404. Moving on to item three, this is our mayor and council report. I'll get this off and get it started. I just want to reiterate our appreciation for the patients who are Bellevue residents who may have experienced changes in water pressure last week while we were changing our water tank valves. We feel that the normal levels have been attained at our wells, our booster station, and our tank of water level. So if you still are experiencing any issues, please reach out to Public Works Director Chris Johnson. His information is available on the website, his cell phone, and his email address contact. And a last outreach to say that our community project survey is closing. So if you would like to have your voice heard about what you would like to see happen for our park project or the Blue Cross Community Project Grant, that $85,000 grant we talked about. This is your chance to take a survey, get online to that. We had Tasha and Porty here doing in-person surveying as well, and we were able to get a lot of feedback. We do have a bit of a gap in our survey between the kids area, so anywhere between the age of nine and 19. So if you have any kids or teenagers, I'd ask and encourage you to get online, take that survey, and give us your feedback so we make sure the project is servicing the whole spectrum of residents that live in the city of Bellevue. And I'll leave it there. I wanted to check with council, anything on Borough for a report, a study?
I don't have any update.
Anything on housing authority just now?
There was a meeting last evening, just in the last year, the housing office. It's significant, and then they're working through the area immediately. They come up, but they're accepting because currently what is on the docket is either reported or they're below the bracket of the AMI, so.
Tom, I can I'm part of the board this morning, or?
The safety movement and things in the museum, so they could open. So there was something that saved up trails ordered and things again last year. We were able to get that moved around. Yeah, and then I don't know if this would be now or during public comment, but I think it's still important for us to know and maybe send out in our newsletter or email from the city if there has, I just sort of noticed an announcement that there's a first case, someone who's always reported in Bellevue. And I think it's important. There's a, I have a public service announcement I can forward you to include a link to. So for our research, especially a lot of people have family that have been, or travel enough. He's an international person who is here as donor, and so what would you mark?
Yes, thank you, myself and community services. Okay, one percent of community services. Suzanne?
I wanted to volunteer to work with the city attorney about the mail that we received from the Republican Central Committee about not being in compliance with state law concerning some of the regulations, particularly the safety. So I wanted to know if that was something the city to determine, if in fact that's accurate and should have considered before.
I think that would be great if you pursue that a little further and bring it back.
Okay.
Thank you all. I'd like to move on to item number four. This is our consent agenda. Approval of minutes, April 28, 2025. Approval of claims, May 13 through May 27, 2025. Item C, Treasurers Report. Item D, Consideration of Encouragement Permit Application for 1261 North Main Street. And E, our consideration of a fee waiver application for June 9th, August 10th, Monday and Wednesday, use of a portion of Memorial Park for the Summer Program slash free lunch for pets in your college. So if you'd like to go line up line, or if there's any large topics of discussion, we can, just for the sake of time, if there's anything we want to dive into more, we can pull for your discussion within the agenda. So that opened up, if there's any questions on the consent agenda.
I have questions about the encouragement process, which may or may not be met. But I don't know what we're supposed to achieve in the consideration, but I would expect that we would see what the permit is, what the stipulations are exactly, the details of what's being, what the conditions are, so.
I recommend we pull that and return to consent agenda item D after our public hearing and before our new business. Okay, any other questions in regards to consent?
Just a question about the work. And some of the materials there, this growing severity, revenue, expenses. And so it is a specific question, but just whether that raises any replies to anything disturbing well so far. As an example of that. Because going to now, there's a value of 19% and expenditures of 56%. Maybe that the grants that could stabilize the overall, okay. But just whether there's any discrepancies that exist so far in revenue and expenditure that are concerning, this is a good question.
Nothing of concern at this point, or your example in buildings and grounds. We had budgeted for 20,000 ingredients. And that's why that discrepancy is there because there hasn't been a rate received in that amount. And that is the majority of the budget for that year, 30 years. In most cases, in Bellevue, in the development, for example, income is 72, almost 73%, which is above where we should be, we're currently at 50% on my budget. So that looks like it's going to be, because we're just entering the building season. So hopefully that is going to surpass our goals there. And same thing with fire. His income is at 91% of what was budgeted. So regarding expenses, the only partial red flag, and I wouldn't say, I mean, it's expected, is the marshals operating, just payroll and operating together with the cell is a little above, it's 67% compared to 58. So he's just a little ahead there, but other than that, everything else is right on track.
Just wanted to acknowledge that we do have a representative from the Hunger Coalition in the audience in case there were any questions in regards to the waiver complication.
How do we address that? I don't think, you know, I mean, when does it get discussed?
Right now in the consent agenda if you have any questions.
So. It's a waiver for specialized services. And right, and so everybody will go around and kind of say their piece about it or just vote on it.
You are welcome to. But for the consent agenda, in the past, just to give a little history, the Hunger Coalition is using a very municipal portion of the park to set up their Blue Truck and serve free lunches to children and individuals who may or may not have food insecurity or needs, and also provide reading accessibility during the summer. And historically, this has been something that previous councils have deemed a fee waiver. And so that's why it's been consented at this time. But you are more than welcome to discuss how to spark some questions.
Well, I guess you can replace housing insecurity with food insecurity, right? This, these are, some of these fees are offsetting for those residents who, a lot of our older residents, some of them don't have children or won't be able to avail themselves or won't choose not to avail themselves of the services. And so I was just curious what the previous discussions have been about saying, well, we're going to take from this group to give to this group, or how it was determined that it served all of Bellevue equally in terms of labor. Because it seems like the Hunger Coalition, its $10 million endowment has more money than Bellevue. So if that would be, just talking, wanting to see how other folks who've been through this before have resolved it.
I think the waiver definition, if I recall correctly, speaks to community service being provided. And in this instance, I view serving people that aren't communities care of a lunch, I consider that as a community service.
But we're asking our housing insecurity to pay for it, right? It's under direct budget, right? If we don't bring in the fees that were set up as part of our revenue for the city, then we're, I'm just, we're just asking one group to subsidize.
Talking about that, yeah, and I'd much like to.
Well, I just want to ask for clarification on that because I wasn't sure. And I just want to make sure how is a fee waiver for, and isn't just food insecurity people, right?
Yeah, I apologize if I missed.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, I need to serve.
Yeah, so, yeah, no big deal. But I wanted to make sure, I wanted to ask for the clarification, just so that I understand how waiving a fee, a part fee, is directly connected to, we're taking from housing insecurity. I just wanted to ask this.
Because these fees are part of our budget. We have the budget, it's to serve all of the community. And so when you say, well, we're not going to bring in the revenue, then that revenue doesn't get spent for, in the way that it would have been spent, no matter what it is. So that's how.
But it's not a direct correlation. I just wanted to make sure you weren't trying to directly correlate it to housing insecurity.
No, it's just that our residents are, you know, a disparate group, and all the revenues that we bring in are meant to benefit all of the residents equally as much as possible, whether it's services or things like that. So yeah, that's where, if it does not, it becomes a missing piece of our budget when we don't collect the fees. And if we don't offset that by saying everyone gets served equally by the way that it was also.
Have you been to the Blue Truck?
Yes.
And so if anyone can go, and it's also an opportunity to come together that don't usually come together, just kind of like the ERC event, which this way because it's a service that is provided by nonprofit in the community to provide services that are safe, but we can't, so. I see that it's an opportunity each year to, that fee for somebody else, that's why.
Okay, and just, I did vote in favor of the ERC waiver because to me, everyone had the opportunity to clean up. Everybody benefits from a clean of Bellevue. So just to clarify, I do understand, just like this to me does not serve all of Bellevue equally as I felt that the ERC did. So that's where I.
But it got different.
These food is served by anybody, anybody.
Yeah, it'll serve anybody, you know.
Everybody that requires a little food for themselves. I mean, there's nothing, it doesn't matter where they are, you know. But I haven't do this for how many years, a lot of years. It's been a mostly amazing program. Me personally, it is an amazing program that has to be, you know, continued. But if we don't, if we don't create, try to a hundred bucks a time, you know. It's a, you said, oh, take care of people. I mean, that's, it's not, you know.
I don't think I was speeding that it's a valuable program. I would think I was stating that they have like an $8 million endowment and we have a $4 million city budget. Point, and so not just speeding the value of the program. It's valuable and, but like I said, with $4 million, they have a lot more. And that was it, that was simply bringing it up, and I understand your point of view, but not trying to disparage the program.
Okay, I want to give you an opportunity, just in case I missed out on or misrepresented what the program was. Would you like to just give a brief overview of what?
Yeah, it's like a summer food program is. So this will be our 10th year running summer food program. It's also known as the Blue Truck, and the Bellevue Park is one of our classic sites. Last summer, we served almost 600 lunches to youth and adults that were with them. We do, we won't turn anyone away when they come to lunch, just that the program is designed to reduce. We offer food access in our Bellevue Center down in Bellevue. We employ secret meals as well as our food distribution. So if adults were to come and want some lunch there, I would buy them with lunch. It's children-sized portions, and then also encourage them to combine with other resources that might come with the butter. This program brings food, reading access, as well as enrichment opportunities in collaboration with a bunch of different community partners like the East Steel, L.A. City, directly to where you can already argue. So, 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 yeah, we go over the link down.
Like we, is it, we asked you to expand because it, like, it was expanded in Bellevue in different areas, do you still go down to the park?
We're not going to go to Westwood, but we'll own park this year because we didn't see very much turnout last summer.
Question on the Hunger Coalition. Any other questions on items on the consent agenda besides identity, which people discussion?
Exceptional, we do consideration of encouragement for your application for 1261 North Main Street. James?
Yes.
Again? Do you?
No.
One more, David?
Yes.
Yes. This time we'll be moving on to item five, public hearing. This is a public hearing, LLA 25-01, TP Lewis Lane, Julian P. Myers. An application for a lot line adjustment for lots 1 through 6, lot 96 of the Bellevue Council site original flat. The proposed lot line adjustment will reconfigure the existing six parcels into three parcels and include a request for key waivers from code requirements. At this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to our community development director, Brian Parker.
All right, thank you. I look forward to do that, like as council, there was a communication between last meeting and last meeting. Last. For, you know, I had a conversation. So, I'm asking him whether your subject we landed for this application, it's someone still actually and said it was a little bit, it was finally, it just, it adds. That's the, to the part of the slow students, it seems like they have a problem with competition. So. Also, Christine, well, and I'm talking about other subjects, I felt my conversation too, and this application may not bring some conversation that has, was very related to it.
I also have a disclosure, I did have a conversation with Christine as well. Very creative conversation last week. And the contents, all the heads we would, that this agenda item was coming up next week, and she did inform me that she planned to attend this week, and that was the extent of our conversation.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a site visit scheduled for today. There is a 16 passenger van out front, courtesy of Mount Rides. So we'll be sure to thank them. We are going to all load up as council, and me and Amy and the applicant and their team, and drive over to the upper portion of the site first. Once we get there, it's very important that we all stay corralled and together and on the record, and then we are able to report any questions that are asked. The council is able to ask questions of staff, and the applicant, we have a bunch of site plans pulled up, and we can take measurements and mark things out as needed. But we're not going to be taking public comment, public, welcome to join us out in the site visits, but during site visits, space. And so we were going to go to the high side first, and then once you guys ask other questions, you investigate everything, you want to investigate, usually we'll load back up in the van, drive down or inside, part of the lower spot, pick out that part from the site, these process, drive back up. Here's the hall, eats pizza, carry out a protest. With that, we will adjourn to the big event.
Yes.
I am in the kitchen. He's had a rant. I kind of, I'll hit my timer too.
Did you see my response?
No, I haven't.
I'm trying to get back into the bathroom.
Yeah.
My face, okay. She's like, I'm talking about.
Is this still recording here?
Are you taking it down?
We're asking, we're finally getting these setting up and all that.
Even this even per video.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if that one's, for their choices, but, oh, that's my favorite.
Okay.
Well, that is making me his favorite tennis. Are we allowed to take?
You want to carry that, the whole thing?
Can you take my back? Totally right on. Okay, sounds good.
So somebody would be good.
I guess it's depressing. It's possible.
I'll go pick out whoever's.
Yeah, Tammy will get them.
It's a.
Okay, I don't know if I can see. So funny, I, you've been so much. Oh, no, I wasn't even thinking, I was like, oh, I'll be. Yeah, and then. You get a new podcast today. Keep grabbing the wrong book, I have to see my mind. Oh, my gosh, I grabbed the right book.
Oh, no.
I keep, I grab, I can't.
Want me that one?
I know. This is a little bit.
You want me to start in the couple? Hey, Brian, Tony Evans here, can you hear me?
I was wondering if you can hear me too. Brian, can you hear me?
Hey, Shelley, it's very difficult to hear the Zoom meeting.
Is it?
Yeah, I did, you guys moved the.
Can be turned up in some way.
Did you guys move the microphone or something?
We, yeah, we're using a different camera in the corner.
Okay, well, we can't, we can't hear you. I missed half the meetings so far.
Okay, Florence, can you hear? I'll see if I can turn up the volume, Tony.
Did, was the microphone in the middle of the table before?
It's, it was the owls, and we're not using the owls. We're using the, it's posted in the corner.
Okay, well, it's, it's not working.
Okay.
Lawrence, can you hear?
I can hear them. See what I can find for. If it gets really bad, we can switch to a, a phone or something.
I couldn't hear anything either, it's very hard to understand.
Okay, let me see, okay.
It's better right now.
How about right now? I speak loudly. I just turned it up like 25, can you hear better?
Way better now.
Okay, I'm cranking it up for you guys. When they get back, let me know, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. So where did the council go? I'm confused.
They're on a field trip to a site visit for the Myers Lot Line Shift application.
So will there be a public hearing now or what?
Yeah, they're coming back, we're coming back. This was set up at the last meeting.
Okay, well, I thought they might do it on a different day.
No, they didn't.
Yeah. Kind of interrupts the meeting. Probably. Hang on, Sean. I got the first egg bit, Sean. I'm ready. I think I'll go get something to eat. I'll be back. I love the steel cup. Okay, can I just offer, please, follow you guys around like a paparazzi?
All right, is everybody here? Yeah. So we are at the site on the high side of property. The right away between Chestnut and Walnut. helpful, go ahead and ask a question.
Where is the property marker for, like, I guess this? Okay, I'll try to project my voice. We're standing roughly at the northeast corner of the property, the block ninety-six. Property line is roughly here on the north end. And then the alley property line runs roughly in this location north south. The shed that we talked about is an encroachment that is governing kind of the full development of the road section is here and to our right. And as you can see, kind of as you continue down the alley, there's other encroachments and landscaping. You'll see the power lines, the, all of the power lines above heads is just reaching and all the other lines as well. There's a container in the right of way currently. And then as you get further to the south end of the right of way, you'll see kind of two power lines that are roughly twenty-two feet apart. So that's where we would be entering with the new alley well. Yeah, so you can see there's a, a transmission pole that's the taller of the two poles. And then there is a service pole that's on the west side of the alley. So we'd be coming in between those two with a requested alley section waiver that's in your package.
Samantha, do you bring a measuring device of some sort?
I did not bring a wheel. I do have dimensions that we can kind of walk off down on. I think it's a building envelope on Propo's Lot One A with the item of question. So we can give you a rough idea of where that is down on Lot One A. It's not fixed. It's not fixed. And the end of the, the, basically the end of Lot Two A visually, it goes till about where here? So we can walk there. Roughly the, the south end of the container is the edge of the proposal's lot, the lot. So sorry, the, the shared lot line between Propo's Lot Two A and Three A and the north side of Lot Two A and the south side of Lot Three A is roughly the, in line with the south side of the existing container. Is this? Yeah, it's the north, northeast corner of Lot Two A. What about the building envelope? So the building envelopes for Lot Three would extend to within fourteen feet of the, as it's now. Got that private agreement taken out company. And there's zero lot line setback here in the zoning district. So the property line could be built up to from the, from the.
But that's against the wall, right? And the wall is still. That's when the wall, after the wall is built, that that would apply, right? And is the wall inclusive of the fourteen? Like, where is the wall on this side of the fourteen feet or is it on that side?
Yeah, so the canal district is requesting and requiring over fourteen feet of clear space for them to maintain their canal from the top of the bank to any structure. So that's what would be, that's what's included in that agreement.
And then did we clarify that it's got on both sides? Like, remember the, in the meetings we were asking is, are they saying only fourteen feet on the east side? And does the other clearance that they're always looking for on the other side still exist or?
Yeah, there's a separate canals that is, is, is drawn further than the existing canal access roads. So all of the proposed development area, that potential building envelope on Lot One A would be outside of that private canals net for the canal company. So the previous recommendation from council for the preliminary plant approval was to the top of the slope. So roughly twenty, fifteen feet from the, the eastern property line of the boundary. So we've negotiated with the canal company to come up with this private agreement to allow us to extend further down that slope so long as there's sufficient engineering for the structure at that time.
It wasn't the city, right? I just want to clarify. It wasn't that the city was requiring as much as it was the canal company had been requiring that much easement. And it just so happened to set it back essentially to a proximity that location.
I wasn't, I wasn't involved in that application and that review. So I can't speak to what the intent was or whose standards were being held with that, that determination.
The previous record on the approval was there was a comment from the, or that for the year days. High bank.
Yeah, that's what I thought originally that that was because of the originally.
It's Sam for clarification. How wide on either side of the canal? Is the canal district asking for an easement from maintenance, I'm assuming?
I believe, I believe it's a fifty-foot wide.
On either side?
No, centered.
Brian. Really, just one second. Do you have someone from canal attempting to speak at this time?
If you as the council determine that this is a benefit.
Would you like to hear from the canal? Yeah, we have this. Please go on.
So the state statute is a little bit, it's intentionally vague. State statute says that the year the district can determine um why their right of way needs to be for maintenance purposes to carry out their obligation. Now, this, so, so there is no dimension, no number dimension. And, and we deal with this often because there are dimensions and practically every other aspect of property, property description, but not the now right of ways. So in this particular case, over the years, the the district owners or the district, the water users and their maintenance people are determined that, that are right of way in this particular case with basically start the lateral limit that starts at the top of the bank and go to the bottom of the bank on the other side. So that's that original width that you're referring to. And it, I was one of the, told them. They placed below the top block. Go there. And then when I sat down with Keith, Keith Myers had a, has a very extensive experience with helping maintain the canal over the years so that he knows and he understands that dimension and why. He and I came up with with a, basically an allowance or a change to that dimension. And we determined fourteen feet from the high water line. Were you down there on that high water line, fourteen feet lateral? That's where the wall would be. The wall could be built up vertically from that point. Because that's the, the right of way would be fourteen feet east from the high water line that, and then the wall, building the purchase of the wall. That's what changed that. And I don't know down there that fourteen foot line is, I guess, it would be about twenty feet lateral.
Did anything change on the west side of that?
Yeah, that's still her, her dimension over there. It's still in scale to the bottom of that bank.
What does it mean? This might not be for you. What does it mean for other people who have had to adhere to previous?
Well, 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 we have.
John, can you stop here just one second? Can you state your name and address and who you're representing for the record?
Yeah, my name is John Wright. And I'm, I manage the Divergent Forty-Five Canal. Address.
Sorry.
John, can we get your address as well?
Six away, Louis Lane.
Thank you.
Right down there. The, like I said, when I started, the, the, the state statute does not give a dimension. Therefore, it's up to the managers, the maintenance people to determine what that dimension is, which, which means that every stretch and every reach is going to have a little bit of a different knee. There are different, certainly now this large deep bank and supported by a high bank on the other side. It, it's quite wide. But when you get further downstream and you got a little ditch that four or five feet wide, I mean, the, the right of way, obviously, the dimension is quite a bit less. So that's why there is no number associated with that right of way.
And I will direct the council to this seat in your site plan with as a, looks like one for contour survey, topo map with the easement identified. And you can go and look over the bank. You need to get a sense of it.
Any other questions about this section? Alleyway questions, lot lines, anything to do with this upper area? Two A, Three A. Yes, firstly, yeah.
There, I ask, there's, it looks like pavements, some pavements down there, that pavement, I see you're that author.
Okay, if you want to hang out here?
No, I know it.
Yeah.
They all got us.
They're out.
They're safe out. Okay.
Oh, Sean, can't do it. We all got it.
Stay close. Yeah, okay. Question over here is just having Sam identify the individual lot that currently exists.
We're roughly at the existing south boundary of Lot Six.
Yeah.
Jessica.
All right.
Does anyone want to go look over the ledge over here? Okay.
Be careful.
So Suzanne and Diane, we're gonna, there's interest in looking over the ledge. We're gonna go together.
Okay, sorry.
I see a mile down there.
That's on record.
When? Mr. Wright? May I ask a question? When you were considering all the, and I'm, and I'm not saying that, Mr. Myers, I mean, he helped develop this town. I know, you know, him and a few other people, known them well. And but when we were, when it was being considered about allowing any additional development, so to the canal, was there any concern about the use of this? You know, like, I know it's already being used for big vehicles to park and stuff. And so that then if they were to develop it, and if they're, God forbid, guys empty their, change their oil or do work out here on the property, was there any consideration to what would then get into, obviously, a critical water source?
Yeah, yeah, there's the, 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 the the statute would require that it's not a dumping ground, not in any way, shape or form. That limits us. In fact, it limits the city of Bellevue because you can't just push snow into the canal because there's that coming off the street and it's got contaminants in it. So, so yeah, that, that's always a consideration. As far as the vehicle parking goes, you know, I at some point, you kind of have to draw a line. And, and, and so my line, what I've arrived at over the years is what I tell people, well, nothing's permanent in the right of way. In other words, we need to move stuff out of there. We can move it, but it's something like a fence post is permanent. A large tree is permanent. A building, obviously, is permanent. So, so if vehicles parked in the right of way with, they tend to look the other way in case.
Yeah.
Or as that goes.
And if they were going to erect the structure or erect something here.
But, but yes, if, if they're going to erect the structure, then it has to be properly engineered so that it's completely, it's technically as safe as it can be. And the district will review that with the engineer so that, so that we're assured that now there's very little chance of any, going to miss compromising our ability to deliver.
So this is, uh, roughly the south boundary of previous lot five, existing lot five. And then the boundary of lot six or lot four, which would be the proposed shared lot line between two and three A.
Is where?
Again, that's south edge of that. So we can either continue walking or we can hop in the van and drive down this way to see the um, the rest of the properties up to the council.
I was gonna grab the van. Maybe to that end. Drive.
Okay. Are we together enough so we can ask a question? Sam, where am I standing in relation to the center line of the app? So, um, where is the center line of that?
Yeah.
So the center line of the alley exactly. There's been a shifting.
Then you're, uh, work the western. Yes.
I'll say it's about here. Is that the front of the property for block six ninety six?
Behind that that pool?
Yes, it's about five feet behind that pool. What? What's of that that service pole?
Any other questions about this section here? I don't find out here. Okay, would you like to keep walking? If you like, okay, then thank you again. Yeah, okay. We're gonna go look over the bank. This way. Tammy, there's a little bit more of a clear over here to the right of the peak.
Thanks.
I was trying to ask us, um, about, uh, any kind of, I apologize if I missed it, erosion. Anything we have right now when it comes to development of these lots? In regards to erosion or showing up the banks? Or anything like that at this time that we have in place?
Uh. Any building would need to be engineered appropriately so that it's it's stable. Or rotating walls.
There there may be a requirement for a soil compaction. Yes, study something like that.
And just because you see one of these here, it doesn't mean it's been brought like that.
Right, years.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rock question, Diane. Um. In regards to alleyway maintenance and maintaining uh, right of ways and encroachment, um, all this encroachment that we're seeing uh, is noncompliant, correct? And so if we are discussing uh, maintaining alleyways versus paving roads, um, would the burden of the maintaining the encroachment be on the city? And, you know, basically the enforcement of the encroachment is not running, continue to follow.
City would be responsible for maintenance.
If it is continued as an out. But thank you. Which we can see at this time. Encroachment.
May I ask? And I just want, I know, I know the answer, but this is business, right? It's not light industrial or heavy industrial or storage or things like that?
All alone business.
Gas station. I was looking for clarification on large equipment and or, yeah, things like that.
Contractor storage yard is a prohibited use in the business zone. Just a note.
Sam, is this the power? One second. Um, if you'll come up here a little bit, Suzanne. Are you talking about having to Idaho power that here over here? So the the request that we made for the waiver is largely due to the existing transmission and distribution lines that run along the east side of the alley. Um, and the concern is that we can't not develop the whole road section here and provide safe distance from the existing poles. Um, talked about undergrounding those and the costs associated with that. And then in terms of, uh, you know, potentially shifting those lines over, then we start to impede upon the the rights that the existing lots have on the east side of the alley in terms of setbacks from the existing lines for safety purposes and combustible materials.
But that was not, that's not a requirement. Like you can pave right up to or five feet from or what the is there, that's not the requirement for Idaho power. That was just a surmise. I just wanted to point that out for clarification. That was a surmise risk by paving something and having power poles back here that have been back here that it may contribute to additional, uh, safety concerns.
So I, yeah, Idaho power has a guideline that refers to a safe distance from our our poles from roads. Um, I mean, I think that that with the full build out section, um, the shoulder is actually in the poles. The gas pole would hit up to the pole. I personally and professionally don't think that that's a safe distance. If you're considering this a street. If it's an alley, maybe it's a different story, but, um, that was the the emphasis for requesting the waiver to shift the road section and narrow it so that we can provide at least five feet of, uh, clear space between the poles, which is a vertical obstruction and any travel way.
And it was did we deem this? We have not deemed this a street. It is still deemed the noun. So it's not like, I wanna, I don't want to mix. I guess I don't want to hear in my face because I'll get something. If I mix what are requirements for a road versus what are requirements for an alley. It's not, they're not the same, both in width and or whatever requirement.
So the city.
Yep, right, I just thought, sorry.
Alley in code is defined as free providing access secondary to the primary access side or behind the primary street. So for these lots over here, the primary access, primary shortage is made. So this is the for that. For these lots over here, they have so this is the primary street. It is not the alley for this side of it.
You know, it's called an alley, not a primary street. I just want to try to verify. I could read column different things right to follow.
Hey.
I mean, I would see this as a fact gathering business. And so a question that relates to that, I see from that powerful fact. Beginning to evaluate.
Thank you. Get to that. If if that's, I don't want you to do this much further. For this one.
Along with everybody?
Yeah.
I wouldn't miss anything.
Oh, yeah.
Let's give this side just a few more minutes once we move down with Sean, um, because we do have to get to the other side of the property. Down low. Any, you want to go any further? Any other questions? We're going to the lot.
Where's the corner?
Dan, where's the corner? It's right.
Rock play right here. Yep. Exactly.
Fair question.
Oh, my gosh. No, no. Oh, well, yeah.
Okay.
And then the Chestnut right of way continues all the way down the river. And we'll see it on the downhill part.
I know further questions at this time for this section of lot. I recommend we load up and drive down River Precinct Estates to access lot one A. Meet down there. Okay, thank you.
Get back there. Yeah.
Could you bring else? I guess that's the first.
Yeah.
Say it back there.
And give me my phone and get on. You could participate virtually from here.
Hold on.
Okay.
It's gonna be like that. So after I'm going to take the block. He's let us in that house come back there.
Everyone's walking this way. So this thing is all part of Chestnut right of way owned by the city of Belleville. So I'm not pointing onto private property.
Just to get people to state their name. With the river. Just to ease.
Yep.
For during the.
Okay.
Hope it's too.
Should have just taken a minute. All right.
I've been stuck here.
With the kind of the additional noise of the river before you ask a question or speak. Will you please just state your name for the record for those watching and for three minutes later?
Raise your hand just maybe a minute to give.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, no. Speaker's not picking it up, so when they get together, it was, you can hear it pretty good.
Okay.
It tried to lay one.
Okay. So this is southwest property corner of proposed lot one A and of the entire project. So everything south of here is city of Belleville right of way. Everything north is private property. And everything west of this pin is also city of Belleville right of way. That's dedicated right of way undeveloped. That would have free public access. From here. The proposed building envelope.
You know, city of Boise is redoing the garden. I got to thinking, you know, a community.
Twenty-three feet.
Pretty garden.
The banks, so if you go from here. Kind of long say.
Well, the city left about four years ago. Oh, yeah.
The length of that, right, for the building, was approximately one hundred and thirteen feet. And so we can walk to the north edge of that. And it varies in width, you know, at the most twenty-three feet. And then a majority of it is roughly twenty feet wide.
The Chantrelle well. So not Chantrelle, the Chestnut well, so.
Twenty feet.
Got a nice flat up there. It's all grass. We do have water up there, so people get water that they're drinking. But the problem is you can't put anything on a well site.
Any questions for Sam at this corner right here? Or would we like to. Sam and Jay. Which corner is this again? So I can show on the map here too. So the the flagging on that corner that we were just standing by is the southwest corner of proposed lot one A. Right here.
The southwest, right here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, correct.
Brian is the southwest corner.
And then where you were earlier was the southwest corner of the building envelope.
Yes. Correct. So a hundred feet from the ordinary high watermark and then also excluding all of the floodplain areas.
See it and point out. Uh. No, I guess you call that the northwest corner.
Northwest. So this one right here.
Yeah.
Sorry, so. It's, I don't think it's flagged. It's roughly the toe of the slope in line with the property line. So the the east edge of proposed lot one A is roughly the toe of the slope.
Okay.
Sam, is that powerful? Roughly in line with.
Yeah, the power pole is about five feet south of the property line.
Yeah.
And what? The canal on the other side of that. What the distance is, this is Tammy Davidson, what the distance is from the canal to that. Did you, was that?
To the property corner?
Yes.
So from the centerline of the canal to the property corner. I would approximate is roughly fifty feet.
Okay, let's go ahead and walk the building envelope.
All time in South guess, so I'm being roughly ignored that of the proposed building envelope. There is a flag up to my right that's representative of the shared lot line. Between lot two A and three A, so the northwest corner of lot two A, southwest corner of lot three A. So you continue north about fifty feet north of here. That's when the fisherman's easement would enter onto the property. And there would be a twenty foot dedicated fisherman's easement as measured from the ordinary high watermark.
Ordinary high watermark or landward side of the riprap?
I believe so.
Any other questions in regards to the building envelope? Um, or about lot one A?
I have none.
Remind me here representing project.
The theme is project big one. Is it appropriate to just ask a question?
Let me have the council say like the here. Uh, question from project big one. Okay.
Okay, so I would like the council to consider that. In one of the aerial images that our organization provided via public comment. And the river had actually migrated all the way to the bank of the canal. And so, um, there is. Additional documentation from IDWR that supports that the entire area that we're standing on was actually reclaimed by the Myers family and rebuilt back. So to answer Mr. Bergen's question about the ordinary high watermark being on the landward side of rock riprap. I think that rock riprap probably extends all the way to the base of the canal due to that flood of record on file. So I just wanted to bring that back up for the council's consideration.
Got a question. Any of the council have for clarification? This helped us said. They've that for deliberation. If that's all the questions we have this time, we'll start making our way back.
Okay.
To the van.
No, I mean, I don't, I don't can we get over there. Earlier than you mentioned, but. So and I don't know if this if. Is, has there been besides the the statement that was just made, not taking that into consideration? But in the recent years where we did have the flood down here. Is that anything to consider where the flooding came right up to where these trees were, at least in the most recent years? Is that anything to consider as far as?
That land is all floodplain, so the floodplain delineates roughly along the edge of this tree line.
And so then it's a hundred foot step back from the tree line or a hundred foot step back from.
So the city of Bellevue's ordinance requires a hundred foot repairing step back from the ordinary high watermark, which is pretty visible here along this bank. Yeah, sending back. Think I could drive the van out here?
The square footage of the building.
Diane.
Go.
I apologize. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay.
We could get.
I'll table that for back at city hall then. My question Diane was the square footage of the building envelope.
You know, you said it's like twenty-three by one twelve.
Yeah, I think it's roughly two thousand per feet.
And the minimum. Building. On a business. Zone box is.
There is not a minimum lot or building size. Our parking requirements and building codes and things like that that need to be met.
Okay.
Which take up.
Thank you.
Get moving.
Over there.
One of the easy right. Wag it.
Be special to the baby.
Well, you said that the drinks that we're having for tonight are in your fridge. So if you can at some point.
Oh, yeah.
Or in, or you're gonna go back with.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't think it was.
And every week, I don't like leaving that going on.
Yeah, no, nobody else does either.
No, this is, no additional news on that other grant. Four. Can you go first, son?
I think we actually wrapped it through.
Okay. Hey, can I ask a question before we go past this point now?
Jamie has a question.
So because the access for this would have to cross like this, something would have to be opened up here. I guess what kind of? You know, it's not, I'm just trying to figure out. I'm not even sure what kind of question. It just seems like a. What needs to happen here for them to gain access there? I think that's a deliberate, you know, a discussion that we can have at that. So that's not a question about why. I just want to make sure.
So you're asking if there's an easement.
Yeah, or like what would it, would it occur across here? Is it a driveway? I'm just trying to envision what. What happens from that point to this point. It just becomes a driveway, right?
The roadway constructed to city standard generally ends at the circular cul-de-sac. Where we'll pass that blue truck there. From the point on, it is improved to a degree. It does not appear to be two city standards. This, the best I can tell, was constructed to serve as a fire truck turnaround. It tends to be informal parking for. Preserve use. Uh, but this is city right of way here. It is city right of way along the edge through the river. To provide access to the site, it would need to be constructed to city standards from that cul-de-sac. Up to here and into the property to someone.
But there is been identified locations at this time.
Correct.
No, no, and I know that's gonna be. I just was trying to envision that.
Sorry, thanks for your, yeah, thank you for your question. Any other questions before we load up in the van? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
It's hard to get up and clear.
I cleaned it up.
Everyone in City Hall, if you could just increase the volume of your voice tonight to ensure that the microphone is picking up what you're saying. And those on Zoom, please let us know, Tony, in particular Rich, Hannah, let us know if that volume becomes a challenge. Still in our public hearing, we just have returned back to City Hall after our site visit. I would ask Brian to kick us back off.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Grudani, Brian Parks, City Land Director. Gonna go a little out of order to what I originally planned, but I forgot to do this before we left. The applicants brought me an update on their appraisal. I've heard of the meeting, so I'll let her speak to that. So you guys can forward all the status of that, but the steps associated with the appraisal of their property. And then from that point, you guys are welcome to ask questions of the applicants.
Thank you. Samantha Stahlmecker was open engineering here on behalf of the buyers for the record. That's where I mentioned the applicant is continuing to work with the land trust in the development of the option agreement to have the land trust and some other funding source purchase the property as an extension of the Howard Preserve. So those negotiations and discussions are ongoing, the appraisal is underway, and we anticipate results of the appraisal in around like two weeks. So what we would like to do is request a continuance tonight so that we can have the results of the appraisal before you make your decision. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have tonight, but ultimately I would love to have you continue if you're willing to the next available hearing.
Before we move into that, I just want to ask the council if there was any expertise discussion that occurred during the site visit that we need to disclose.
Expertise? About the application, sorry, about the application.
Okay, thank you for your time. It's at this time that I would like to ask the council if you'd like to proceed with the public hearing or continue the matter to a future meeting.
I would like to, I would like to see the public hearing since we do have public that we time on here to.
Do you have our council opinions on continuing the public hearing? Or continuing the matter to a future meeting?
What was the reason for the request that you had to continue the appraisal? Appraisal of the property or the property with the lot?
The proposed lot 1A is currently being appraised as part of the option agreement that the owner is working on with the land trust. And I think it would be beneficial to understand the outcome of that option agreement or potential of that option agreement before you make decisions.
How does that piece of property work into all of this? How do we have the power to determine how that piece of property is?
It's time before we or just make the determination if you'd like to continue the public hearing at this time, proceed with the public hearing or continue for further day. I'm hearing for one council member should like to proceed with the public hearing tonight. Does anyone else have an opinion in opposition to that? Stand there.
I think it's appropriate that you continue to have a comment on the use of the home as here. As far as whether
And I also think with the site visit fresh in our minds, it might be beneficial to
At this time, we're going to proceed with the public hearing. Applicant Samantha, is there anything else you would like to present to council? And/or stand for questions from council and City Hall?
We have no new materials to present tonight, so I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has. And then I would request an opportunity to respond to public comment.
Questions for that? Yes?
Samantha, the why does now we have contracts with the users of that property, really sell users of that property? They have contracts with them that goes for using it?
I don't know if they have a formal contract, I know that Keith has mentioned that there is these agreements following or informal on the property for those people that are legalizing that proportion of the property.
Maybe there's a couple, just my questions. What is this, you mentioned have safe separation from the power poles? Do you have that mapped? I saw some BCLs for the material, some of those people pulled themselves with the insulators or or maps? Since that's gonna impact potentially how that road gets moved? Have any mapping?
Yeah, so as part of your record, we did provide an exhibit that shows the requested out road improvements. And that does show the existing location of the poles and in relation to the road section, the five feet of clear space. But I think, I feel is appropriate for a safe development of a road roadway and not locations.
Can I just add a follow-up on that? So it's, that's for if it stays in an alleyway, but what if it's been classified as a street?
Yeah, I'm not sure that the classification really impacts the functionality of the street. It's going to be utilized, ours utilized largely today. So I think that the hard part is that the city of Bellevue really does not have a standard for an alley specifically, they just have a 50-foot right-of-way road section, which is what SAFLIS determined is applicable in this location. So that's the intent, that's really the reason that we've been requesting.
Did you ask me her questions?
Yeah, save that for your staff questions, please. But Tom, really quick, I did wanna point, you might have found the page, page 91 in your packet. I believe has the exhibit that Samantha is referring to, the road section comparison exhibit. Apologies, go ahead, Tom.
And then on the kind of prior to my own power about moving the poles and assuming expense, of course, associated with moving the poles. Did you inquire about moving the support that's on the corner with Chestnut and the alley slash street? But that intrusion that might be less expensive to move, I didn't know it's an intrusion, it's not an intrusion, sorry. That's the first question, it means intrusion of consequence. And is that an intrusion whether, or about redesigning how the support is on the corner?
Yeah, it would intrude into a full 26-foot road section development, especially on the south side where those flat service poles and pretty close parts need to be existing, transformable. We didn't inquire about moving those poles.
Just that one?
Just shifting the one north. No, we did not inquire about that in particular. We only considered potentially shifting those poles east, which would later impact those lots.
Why are you trying to repair the property with the envelope? This is, that's a big part of the contention, right? So it's just, it's been established that it significantly increased the value of it, or you've done all of it.
Yep, exactly.
This time to having staffs present anything else that he feels necessary and council, if you have questions to staff, Brian, we will.
Thank you, I don't have any additional materials for that. It's been a few questions.
Bad question.
Yeah, so we have a 25-foot alley, for instance. With that basis.
Standing still, asking questions?
We're still asking questions of the staff.
Brian? What are my powers, if it's city councilor's office? What am I facing? Like I see your recommendations, right? I see the PMZ recommendation, some of which are contrary to your right. A definitive checklist, so I know, like impact reports or where's all that stuff? What am I facing? How can I, like, where are my powers to say, oh, you have to use the property this way or you How can I, like, where are my powers to say, oh, you have to use the property this way or you have to sell it if you want us to do this? It doesn't seem like you have those powers. We talked a lot about this stuff.
Generally, you are acting as a judge in this instance. You're evaluating a land use proposal against the standards of our city code. The section in the separate titled findings code section, but leaving what they are the specific standards that you were utilizing in this instance. There is the 116 line adjustment standard that it is. That are admittedly a little difficult to read and comprehend. Generally, you're going to identify that it's compliance, in compliance with the standards of the subdivision title generally, I mean, it refers to our law requirement, law inside, law science one. Standards, access, yada, yada, yada. And then there is additionally the requirements for approving a waiver of subdivision standards. That is also including this tag. 17, what am I saying? And granted, that definitely must find that if a special service says this in which creates an undeparted, but it's part of the apple beans. And that that the request is sufficiently documented. Proven.
If I look at this, I say, as we've talked about before, there's a truth of really heavy impact studies. Is that just information that we're not that that has not ever been established as part of the process that there should be impact studies and truly understanding if it changed like this, what's the impact over here or if it did flood? Any of that stuff is that stuff that all of that's already been determined. So we're only going on what exists currently.
You as a council need to have a level of confidence of the information provided is substantial enough to vacate determination that complies with the standards. I think like environmental effects study or something to that, it may be a little large scale for requests. But that is not my determination, maybe.
So in that case, if we were to say, okay, well, we see this, this parcel that's from, you know, the, the building area, we know it's a business area, you know, or at least we think we know that there's one area in. It seems like it would be, and knowing that potentially there weren't any people interested in this, which is why it's been figured all this work's going. It seems that there should be some sort of traffic studies impact to those neighbors. Now there being businesses down there. When it's currently, it looks like a home area would have a lot more traffic in that area. So it seems like there is.
Traffic study is something that's very difficult to do without identifying use. So until somebody comes along with a proposal to develop and they send the roadway further. I don't think confidence to what but it is, if basically some everything requires a a whole mess of things that may be applicable and
Right. Thank you, Mayor. And, and I think as we forward into deliberation and analysis of this application, a lot of those questions will be answered.
Do you have a question for Brian?
I don't have a question for Brian.
I have a question for you. Okay. So if we know that that area has flooded over the last 20 or 30 years. Are those appropriate impact studies where we say, well, if you build something there, you've changed that, what's the impact of that flooding now? On those neighbors in that area as well? But those things that are considered relevant as you look at that that building envelope and that type of analysis saying what's the impact to the existing people in that area? So, right? Because if you change the river doing something or it's typically been a flood plain and because it was a flood plain, it's protected. Those other homes, I don't know if those things have been proven, but isn't having some of the analysis that would be an impact?
So our adopted floodplain ordinance includes maps developed with GTO FEMA that identify a floodway and then a flood plain. So if you're looking at the maps under the Lake Town gas, for example, there's the red and blue dash area, that's the floodway. Then the area outside of that, blue is the 1% floodplain. The area outside of that in the goldish is 22% floodplain. So the floodway, the inner course of that is the area that absolutely is protected to avoid downstream. The 1% floodplain theoretically, based on the models developed, could be filled in two feet from that existing grade. And it would not have downstream. The footprint in the application materials and outside of the 1%. There's a right, there one half of what we're hearing is that that is great. General psychosurprise.
So you did, there was analysis. Basically, your analysis is that the changing of that environment does not, in terms of nature, does not negatively impact the other culture properties there.
There was not an analysis specific to this proposal because again, there's not a specific site plan to it. There is a generalized floodway model.
Yeah, in, in the essence of this application and the lot on shifts in the waivers. Let's say we approved the lot line shift and we don't require this the owner, the current owner to, we, we require them to do the certain upgrades. In particular, this is an example, the alley. We don't require them to pave it. We require them to write it, upgrade it and move it into a space that it should be kind of clear, the alley, make that alley properly accessible. If in the future, when someone comes in, one of the new owners to develop by us not requiring this applicant to pave it. Could we then for the, based on the use, because we're going to now consider our use of the location, could we then require and say, well, based on that use, we will then require this access to be paved up to and including. Is, that does not
It all depends on what the use is and what the impacts associated with that use is. If this were a new greenfield subdivision of these farmland. We require that they would start all streets, all the city standards and not put it on each individual lot purchaser to build up to their lot. But that's not what's happening here. This is an infill project.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't preclude us from doing it if we
Not necessarily.
Okay. I just want
Questions for staff at this time?
What is our history with precedents with the waivers that we have issued and the rigor with which we're applying these waivers, right? We're not necessarily always enforcing the rules that we have currently. Do you have any concerns about our rather seemingly habitual waiting things? In terms of your, at your intermission of
I don't have to review or look into what waivers we have formally granted in the past. I wouldn't worry about prior precedents too much. We really can't do anything about that. And there
At this time, I would recommend we move to take a public comment. Yes, if, if council needs pizza or just a refreshment, so what if we do it beats in the back? Area. I don't, I don't know what's So I, once justice is receded, I will ask that we start with public comments in city hall. So whoever would like to make a public comment, if you raise your hand, I will call upon you and then I will ask that you stand at the podium. Say your name and your address for public record. And then please provide your public comment. We have a three minute limit. For public comments. But this time, anyone in city halls who'd like to make some comment, please raise hand and I will call upon you.
Tom Blanchard, please. I, I, that sounds like a public comment, then, because I understand you have a copy out. I don't want to put you all of this. I do want to make some initial comments relative to the, the approach that I'm considering in the alleyway. I think now is the time to start cleaning that one up and I really wanted to create a comment, so in that case. I, I did want to touch on a couple of points. There's a number of issues that I've raised in here that have not been resolved. And I think this is the place to do it. And now is the time to do it. So there's a lot of questions out there. If that person comes along, as I've mentioned, and he claims his street drainage, for instance, coming down over the alley to the canal as his city street, and I think we'll get right to have to have some funding for a house on the city street. If that's the case, there's the 25 foot setback for residential use affect this property also. And I think that's something the council has to look at. There's a number of other issues that I've identified in here that I think they should be looking at. Among other things, it does not provide any emergency access that connects from the turnaround up there down to the our property and if you have a fire, if you have any public health safety issues associated with the Howard Preserve or anything goes along the river, you have absolutely no access to reach that property because it's coming in from the south or the north end. You have the pedestrian bridge and then you have canal. So during the time the canal is active, active, you have to drive through that canal. It's deep at times and it will be passed, but lots of people should be looking at that public access agent. Again, I'm looking at lot A as a, about 2,000 square foot single family house. We take up that whole piece of property. Now, if we lose a little bit more to a 25 foot setback, we have absolutely no yard state. It's hard to imagine, this is a 20 foot wide and I don't know what, 60 foot long piece of property. Very hard to put a house in there and still have any yard state, which means they will be, you know, being the outside in the of the parent area, you know, the large space and it's, anything in this proposal that tests that property that you heard, a zone that's all in terms of being good vegetation, strong river front property. So I, I think those are the kind of things I need to take a look at that list and, you know, see what we have in front of us because most of them are going to require additional meetings and public hearings, publications and more expansive, more time to do. And I think the time again is right now. And, and I think I want to end with one last comment. Christine Hill pointed out that that property had been illegally claimed based on a threat to the canal and the original permit was to build rip back along the toward the canal. And when that property was reclaimed, it was moved out to the property line of Keith Myers. And I think to some degree to allow a property to be developed down there, which is very is rewarding, inappropriate illegal activity. I know Keith was called in front of the water resource board. He didn't pay a fine for this of $200. I'm not convinced that that is the, the way we should be handling this property. It has flooded in the past. I've had pictures of the things, I can't find them, but the, the hat property, which is just to the south of Keith's property. They're totally covered in water in 2006 and I know that there was water also pushing in the north end in 2007. So a long history of flooding down there. I think the approach is not the ability.
Thank you. Comments. I'm going to pause for a second. Tony, do you have your hands raised for public comment or to let us know that you're having trouble hearings?
Oh, sorry. I thought I saw a countdown for the final minutes of this hearing, but it seems to have gone on anyway. No, I can hear much better. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Tony. Any other public comment inside city hall? Please raise your hands. Please, instead of podium, name, address for the
Okay, so me, Kate, for one public hearing. My name is Chrissy Hill. Previously, Wayne County's planning manager for eight years and now I'm talking big wood. And I grew up in Bellevue. I submitted, Amanda and I, the team at Project Big Woods submitted additional comments on May 16th. Can I just confirm that you guys received those? Wonderful. So I pointed out some provisions in your chapter one purpose within your title of an subdivision. I think those are easily skimmed over when you're making decisions on applications like this. Purpose guiding principles in the beginning of every chapter of your code are important to kind of refresh and take a look at. I rewrote a lot of Wayne County's code with respect to floodplain and stream alteration and things about nature outdoor lighting and we spent a lot of time on the purpose statements. And so I just encourage you to refresh your memory and kind of take a look at this purpose statement. Tom is right. You know, I have a document from IDWR dated 2006 that is a notice of violation from the department issued to Mr. Keith Myers for illegally reclaiming the land at the base of the canal. Talks about 100 feet of riverbank that was that Keith put gravel fill along. The requirement from IDWR was that this was supposed to be stabilized with a rock or brack toe along the base. So that all of that material didn't wash back in the river and create burst impacts for downstream adjacent waters. So I think it's important to just keep in mind what that property, where it's been, what it served as in the past, which is river channel and what it could potentially. I just think it's a, a threat to any future people like owners down there that try to structure down there. It just is not the right location. While we were on site, I found it interesting that the artificial burns that were built up on that property on the lower bench actually had a backward slope towards the canal. So if water did crust over that dirt road that we were standing on and this artificial burns, all of the surface water would actually inundate whatever structures there and dark skates, storage vehicles, be a nightmare. There's also no vegetation in the building envelope area, which means that there's no roof mass holding that land together. There's nothing underneath securing and stabilizing that. I do have a question. I'm not sure what basis an appraisal would serve in decision making. I don't know in appraisal what that has to do with your criteria and code. That seems like a, a handshake deal off to the side. So I encourage you not to let that distract you from the proposal at hand. And lastly, I just want to encourage you to say, this is not it. I've heard all of you say that you don't have good feelings about this. It's not your job as elected officials to carry that burden to redesign projects. There are qualified applicants and the property owners, that's their job. Let them do that and bring it back to you. So today I would encourage you to do the best of the public interest and deny the proposal that's being presented to the state.
Thank you for your comment. Not seen any other hands at city hall. Are there any hands or anyone on Zoom who would like to make public comment at this time? I'm seeing a hand for, it looks like Jamie Rothschild.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
I'm Janie Rothschild. I live at 880 Riverside Drive. And my concerns are about the proposed parking lot.
One second, Janie. I'm going to put you on pause. I'm going to have the volume turned up at city hall so we can hear you better.
Okay.
Janie, we can speak early, please, so I can hear if it's better.
Yes, testing.
Wow, that's much, much better. Okay. Would you please start again? Your time starts now.
Yes, hi. Um, Janie Rothschild, I live at 880 Riverside Drive, and I did want to just bring up that I would think it would be very important to complete a traffic study ahead of any parking lot plan approval, um, to determine the need for new traffic concerns and expected traffic growth. Also, that entire area, when we walked over by 1B or 1A, was flooded in 2017 and it came right down the street. So I'm also concerned about, um, how it's going to impact our homes as far as, you know, redirecting water in a flood. That's, those are my only questions.
Thank you for your comment, Janie.
Thank you.
We have any other attendants on Zoom who would like to make public comment? Florence?
Yeah, 33 Lower Broadford Road in Bellevue. And I guess what I'm hearing tonight is that this piece of property, it's like fitting, trying to build, there's like fitting a square peg in a round hole. There's just too many things that are, um, complicated. Very complicated on this piece of property, and I think that the city really has to think really, really hard before granting any kind of waivers in the floodplain. I mean, um, it seems like the best use of this piece of property is going to be to become part of the Howard Preserve. And how can we make that happen? That seems a lot simpler than trying to put this square peg in a round hole. Thank you.
Thank you, Florence, for your comments. This is the last call for public comment for Zoom participants and those in City Hall. Seeing no hands on Zoom or City Hall, uh, we're going to move on from public comment. Um, it's at this time that I'm going to ask the applicant Samantha if she would like to reflect at the end of the public comment dispute.
Thank you, Amanda Myers-Samantha. So I'm here with Hope Engineering for the record. Um, I think that the, what I'd like to start out by just reiterating tonight is that this property is an existed, existing planted subdivision that contains six curbside lots in the city of Bellevue. We're not here to request a new subdivision, new creation of lots, um, rezoning. The property is existing as business-owned property in the city of Bellevue. Um, I understand that there's concerns about creating a building envelope on Lot 1A. That building area exists today. Um, and with the restrictions that the city building has for the riparian setback and the floodplain ordinance, um, the area that's shown on the proposed preliminary platified building envelope is that area that remains oh, available today for a building in the business on the district. So in terms of requesting additional impact studies, um, this subdivision does not change that. In terms of what may have happened in the past, I can't speak for the, the property owners or previous property owners or what happened at that point in time. Um, what we know and what you're here to review against today is what's currently on the property. There's an existing floodplain that's mapped by FEMA, which is federal vacancy, um, and your ordinance refers to that as a governing, controlling overly districts, which you have control over. We're proposing development, potential development outside of that area. Um, in terms of, you know, what a structure in this location could do in the future and what risk that poses, um, that structure would certainly need to be designed and protected in the future. Um, but I will say that it's not possible really to just let this property go in the future. Uh, if there were flooding condition, there's existing development further south that has to be protected as well. Um, so I don't think that this property could just be, you know, relinquished to the river and not see any impacts further south. If you fit the riverbank where it is currently, it has to be where it is in order to protect that existing property to the south. Um, you know, I think that the goal with this flat amendment really was to create an opportunity to segment the lower portion of the property for negotiations like what's going on right now with the land trust, um, for continuation of the Howard Preserve. And I agree that the, the appraisal should make no um, impact to your findings on the preliminary plat that's proposed. However, I think that it does provide, um, important information for consideration, you know, what those potential uses are on Lot 1A. Um, I don't think that you can condition that option agreement, um, like we've talked about in the past. But as an applicant, we are willing to postpone that so you have a clearer picture of what could happen on this property in the future. Um, overall, uh, you know, I think that Keith and Judy really do want to see this property on the lower portion of the subdivision go to continuation of the Howard Preserve. Note that the council sees that this is a step in that direction. Um, and if they have any further questions, I'm here. Answer them, um, address any public comments if you don't like, I've overlooked any, um, and we appreciate you. Detail those.
It is at this time, council, I will ask you if you have any, um, outstanding questions for staff or the applicant that you'd like to ask, because after this, just to clarify, we will, uh, close public hearing and, and then move into deliberation, which will then close the time for the back and forth questions of their applicant and our staff. This is kind of the last time for the back and forth questions between that council or local council and staff. Okay.
Does, close the cap. First, before I ask a question, can I make, clarify the point? And I mean no disrespect to, um, your name just something, Christine Christine Hill, I think that I just wanted to be clarified, you had made a statement that everyone was on the same page with something, and I'm not saying right or wrong. I'm saying I didn't make a comment to you about. I just didn't want to transcribe that everyone, like as if all of us talking here, you just represented all of us. I, I just wanted to make sure that that I wasn't, I didn't feel that that was an appropriate representation of what we do. Yeah, or not. Just wanted to make sure of that. So thank you. Sorry. Um, so, and then the, does the fact that there, that the Myers did, it is known that the Myers did possibly build this back improperly or has, it wasn't, it wasn't, um, there is no record of it being done appropriately? Yes, this is established. Would that come as something for us, is that something that we should or could consider with regard to separating that out in any way? I, I wasn't sure, so I asked that question of staff. Does the fact that they may not have built it back properly, does, doesn't put us in any, uh, put liability on us if we agreed to separate, do this and then all of a sudden they sell the property to someone and put a business down there? I know, because previously there was property I purchased out the canyon that had been previously used as a dumping ground and was previously, um, rebuilt back without my knowledge that it was a dumping ground. So when we started digging and we found out that it wasn't done properly and it had been dumped, then when I became liable to the new owners, because I sold them that property and I was not aware. But I just wanted to, so I'm just trying to make sure if we're aware that the property may or not have been built back properly, could we be held liable in any way to any if we did not, you know, if we allowed this and, and they, and someone did go ahead and get a building, make a building.
Uh, I think I would defer this to Rick, uh, mine.
Uh, Tanner, I'm not sure I understand your question. Can you hear me?
Yeah, so if we, does the fact that we know, we currently know or we're aware that the Myers rebuilt that platted portion of their property and did not build it back, like using the legal, use, doing it properly or using the system that's in place legally and got fined. And then if we, with knowing that, and if we allow the, the lot line shift and if, and the Wood River Land Trust doesn't purchase it, or have you, someone else develops it and buys, you know, wants to build something, are we liable, knowing that where we've allowed this and that, that there's a potential for development? Is there any liability on the part of the city?
Well, I don't know. What fact is that? Uh, is that a fact in the record?
Yes.
There is testimony to the effect that this was improperly, uh, reclaimed. Um, I've not seen specific documentation that we can prove.
Are you saying there is documentation for that?
I apparently just emailed.
There is, it is alleged that there is documentation. It has not been confirmed. Buyout sentence. And I'm not saying it hasn't been confirmed, but buyout, I just, yeah.
I don't know how. Well, either are you saying they don't legally own the property or they've done something illegal on it that's, that's in the record? I, I, I'm missing something here.
Looks like this, uh,
Is this, is this allegation or is there fact in the record? So I want to know.
We have an email here with a site plan and some other information. Uh, I don't know. There's a great way to effectively reveal all this information into the record at this time, so I suggest if you want to investigate this further, it's casual. It's a few degrees and I.
Ryan, I have another question. Let's look at the conditions, just that must have served, you know, our.
Well, let's, yeah, I just, I mean, are you satisfied with that answer? Do you have a follow-up question?
I'm satisfied. We can get that.
Generally speaking, as long as you're having a good faith, investigating, that's our ability.
Uh, as the council and moving forward, just thinking long-term and what our ability is with these conditions and waivers, since the applicant is requesting, you know, to reconfigure the six parcels into three, hopefully come back with a counter condition stating, you know, we will um, allow, you know, condition two or three, but you cannot build on Lot 1A whatsoever. Maybe, you know, can we are we allowed to do that?
Um, declaring a specific piece of property unbuildable is not generally accepted. It's an easy way to get into taking these situations.
This is the reason. I'm just wondering with all the violations with property owner.
But let's continue.
Yes, answer. Yeah.
Uh, the, well, it's going to be configured in whichever way it's appropriate. So you request that the lot.
And, and or approve and or change conditions or add more conditions for. Okay, so yes.
But there was ways to work, work.
Yes.
Around that. Okay.
I do have a question. Um, Ryan, if, if it is, if there is documentation that shows that Mr. Myers, uh, illegally reclaimed the property um, and he was fine for that reclamation, um, I'm wondering if in your research moving forward to get more information on that, if there was a remedy that he had to, um, provide, um, in order to make things okay.
And what are the, the, or how does it work with that large, basically, he spent or right of way to get into that property at the end where we were? To get into Lot 1A going over city property. How does that, that work? The drive, it's like a 50 feet from what was paved to the lot line, right?
The, uh, fire truck turnaround, right there in the paved area is, I believe, at the south and just that right of way. Um, so it's a gap from that point on. It would be perfect to city center, right access to.
But how does it get designated for use for, for private property, basically, right? Rather than saying, you know, hey, we're going to put a whole bunch of drinking pumps in there for the city. I'm just wondering how, it's a, it's a right of way of by Bellevue, right? Correct. So how does it get designated as a driveway for private property rather than a public use area?
It would be, the roadway itself would be a public roadway. There, I think we've been in the public, um, as would any cold tank on the. That's a lot of that time before you do that, the public right of way.
Right now, it's just an unpaved road. It's already established as a road and it ends.
It is.
It's just unpaid.
There is no road there.
Right, road there currently, but it's already designed to be a road to end the pandemic as well.
Continuation question on Suzanne's question. What permitting or uh, approval could come before council in order for that to become a private road to that lot?
My understanding of our code for undeveloped roadways and alleyway, if a property ownership will improve it, improve it to city standards, uh, they review it with staff and local city engineer to determine whether these can be constructed to city standards and like they, uh, get their plant staff.
I could add to that, Mayor. Um, the, uh, the building envelope, as I understand it, is outside of the flip. However, there would have to be a road constructed to go into that building envelope. And, uh, that would lie within the floodplain and in that instance, that road would be required, uh, anyone constructing that road would be required to submit a floodplain development permit, uh, for that application and that is reviewed.
Sorry.
If that is reviewed administratively, um, in, in situations in the past, if it's been too big of an administrative decision or one that I was uncomfortable maybe because it was extremely controversial, um, you do have the option to, um, push that onto the city council. Um, but that floodplain development permit has no less than 30 criteria that have to be met. So it's not, uh, it's not an easy, there, there are several hoops to have to jump through in order to, to get that permit.
Any other questions for staff or?
Just to clarify, so you're saying that administratively, you can open a lot?
That is my understanding.
No review by anyone else in open, or essentially a road that doesn't.
Within the provided right of.
And, and also, um, so, so this would essentially be an encroachment into the city property and that permit is issued straight.
The encroachment permit for the driveway connecting from the public. The encroachment permit for the driveway connecting from the public right of way into the subject property would be an administrative. A different than the construction of a public street. And also administrative review, but it's a different thing.
So if there are no other questions, it's at this time that I am going to um close the public hearing. And council will begin deliberating. So at this time, I will close the public hearing. Council will open it up for deliberation amongst.
Mayor, uh, just so that I'm clear. Um, did we formally make a decision to continue it? To, we did not formally make that decision.
We did not so made a formal decision to proceed with the hearing.
With the public hearing.
Hearing. Um, you're at this, at this time, we're continuing, sorry, considering relationship, we're in, we close the public hearing. Um, with this deliberation, uh, one of the outcomes we could recommend, recommend would be to continue the public hearing. There's options for approval, denial, uh adjustments of conditions and for continuation of the hearing. Those are all ways in which you could determine.
Yes, I, I, I was under the assumption that we would just take, oh, yeah, and then continue it, but if. I never mind.
No, that's what Tom said, and I think that maybe the mayor will hear him say.
Well, also based on the discussion that we have, if, that at this time you would like to deliberate, we have, we have options.
Yep.
Um, and so if you'd like to propose to me the continuation, the motion, that's an option as well.
I'll make a motion. Me, retain the public comment and set it for a date certain of the next maintain, yeah, open, open comment and section backup.
But I would ask you a question, um, real quick unless this is inappropriate of, um. Uh, what your consideration is uh for needing continuation of this public hearing. Um, this is now our uh second time reviewing the information. It's a site visit. We've had multiple rounds of comment. So, um, I would like to hear your justification for uh continuing. At the end of the day, it is your decision, but I, I, I guess.
Uh, it being beneficial to explain for staff and we have in what additional information is should be investigated in the interim period. Uh, I will also note that the pending of the appraisal and uh enable the staff to review that. It's probably not feasible by the next meeting, any suggestions?
So the difference is whether you, we just continue, we table this, we table the deliberations on some date certain, or we maintain open, right? Is that possible? Cause I, I did want to still have those questions answered. And I think that is important.
I think if, if.
Go ahead.
If you're going to get more information, if you're going to maybe take new information in, I would maybe keep it open for public comment then too.
So then there's a
And so not.
On the table. But it hasn't been seconded.
Is there anything you all feel to deliberate? I mean, I, I would like to continue to deliberate.
Well, there's, there's this place off. I think about having a crazy guy. No, I, I think of a one A piece of crap. It's a beautiful piece of property. It needs to go to the, you know, Asian version. You know, I mean, it's possible that all you have to worry about is two and three. Makes a big difference to my opinion.
I just want to make sure think it's short. I want, for me, I wanted to make sure that some of the things that we, that were brought up tonight, that seem like other people might have public comment on or even just I want those things answered and I want them answered publicly so that we're being transparent about the concerns that were brought up. And so that's why it's, this is an important thing. This is a big deal for the city and for establishing a sound precedence and some of these concerns. So maintaining the public hearing till even if it's thirty days from now. We're not hurting ourselves and we'd be benefiting from getting additional information and finding out about the appraisal and then being able to come back and properly deliberate and uh feel like we have things unanswered. At least for my part. So that's why I, my best thing to do is but that was in the motion and if it does not get seconded.
Oh, sorry.
That's cool.
You know, I, I, I take that. This is a flawed property. You know. It's broken. It's flawed. So, yes, we really serve these by one, one A. Two and three are flawed properties. Oh, everyone, hey, build on that, yeah. You really can't build on it, you can't, oh, but like, it's a, do some pretty creative stuff. I, I, I would, I would personally, okay, they, they would buy that whole.
So we have a motion on the table and we have a second. The motion of the, uh, on the table right now is to uh continue to a date certain um per recommendation of staff. That would be to June twenty third.
Motion was June ninth.
Sorry, motion was June ninth.
I want to do that.
No, I said to a date certain and I wasn't sure what that, the next available one.
Next council meeting.
No, I meant, uh, next available. So it was.
So I'm suggesting friendly amendments to the motion.
I, I, I have the motions.
No, I think I just reinstated. Cause I made the motion. I would amend that the motion. Be amended to June twenty third. Uh, sorry if I'm upsetting you. I don't really know what to do. I just want to make sure, so amend the motion to June twenty third. Maintain keep the public hearing open to a date certain of June twenty third, so we can allow for appropriate back gathering, information gathering.
Got it.
So can I just ask before we make that motion, can I be allowed to just ask, what, like, are there con- conditions that you would like to see?
So at this time, we have a motion and we have a second. Um. There is a vote.
Okay.
If you do not, if you need more time for discussion, you can vote no on the motion and we can vote back to discussion and then there's space for another motion.
Okay.
So this time I take a vote on the motion.
Change?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Um, it is my recommendation, uh, that any questions you have or information you need before the next meeting to submit to Brian Parker, our department of property. So that is he, you know, so that, that can be prepared and submitted uh for public knowledge in the next, uh, in the city council packet of the June twenty third.
May I ask for clarification? Do I need to submit, do we need to re-sign that in writing what we've already asked or? Was it?
I will do my best if there's
Okay.
Information you really care about, I would recommend.
Thank you. Um. I do intend to take a recess, but for the sake of time, I'm going to move on to the agenda. Um, but you'll take a recess before our workshop. Thank you all who attended the public hearing via Zoom in the city hall. We look forward to hearing from you again end of June. Okay. Uh, it is at this time that we are going to uh revisit, revisit, uh, item D from the consent agenda. This is consideration of an encroachment permit application for one two six one North Main Street. Um. Public Works Director Chris Johnson. Like to.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chris Johnson, Public Works Director. So this packet was brought forward about three weeks ago. Uh, we tried to get it through the last month or last meeting. It just used to go as I'm saying, it is a little bit larger uh of an application. Uh, we took a little bit more time with it. It's, it's a very simple project. They're going to be working at the north end of a second spruce. Um. Most of the work will be done will be on the east side of the uh bike path there. The areas where it does come into play for the city of Bellevue, um, they are pulling excuse me. If you have one section of line, it's already in the ground with a two hundred fifty slack. They're going to leave that there, the whole line to the other side of the street where it's already tied in. That's where they will tie in the line, go up to the north. Uh, it's already false there. All the infrastructure is pretty much halfway up as far as conduit. And then, um, as they get further up, they'll have a new conduit, um, boring. And then they'll go under highway seventy five. The part of traffic control at seventy five, the ITB concern and not a city of Bellevue concern. You have to give a permit through that to pose down or to be work or delay traffic. They have a have a document here that shows, um, they work their, their traffic, so their, their traffic diversion plan. Um, where the permit requirements go to code, uh, nine two dash two, this comes right off of the application required material, permit material of Bellevue code, nine two dash two, um, do no less than fifteen days prior to the next regulation date on council funds. This includes not limited to clients, association drawings, engineering data and other informations. So going through the permit requirements, um. Section A, um. Doesn't really apply, um, encroachments are limited to public utilities, which they're considered as the only, uh, one through five is the only one applicable there. An item B, uh, types of permits, compliance required prior to activity permitting hindering or undertaking such contractor of person, agent or person shall find application the city to issue permit therefore. Again, they need, um, encroachers should be limited to the following, public utilities, public improvements, approachments and street driveways under public right of way. For the application permit fee, um, although um, item A, have the name and their address of the applicant, the legal description of the plan of the much proposed work shall be done. Um, name and address of the contractor, the contract and sign due to work, bona fide cost estimate which on the application is fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty. Um. The permit is for construction or replacement or any improvement, construction plan, drawings, um, which they have included. We have the alignment profile of the streets, where the works that closed. They have location of the underground utilities, location, size, uh uh, created as necessary, connections to existing states and adequate dimensions for trajectory construction. I said we're not reviewing these, um. It looks like we draw a little hindrance to the city or to the residents of Bellevue. They'll be working primarily along the right way between highway seventy five and.
Any questions?
I think I have more of a question about process and where is all the things that you've just cited are documented and where the permit is that stipulates any of the things that may or may not be um, relevant.
The pressure application available upfront is concluded, provided in your packet.
No, the permit, I'm sorry, the issue, the day you want to issue.
The encroachment application is for an encroachment permit. So at the front of your packet, the application
Yeah.
is the permit application.
So there's no other documentation that's returned to the applicant that was, that would be created to say yes, provided you adhere to this. There's, there's no official.
You're asking for the official.
Fair for dying, have a read. Those yellow things up on the, well, again, are roof permits, building permits, uh, some other stuff. Uh, that would be what they.
That's a physical permit. That would be, uh, if approved, would be given to the applicant.
Oh, okay. What are we proving this expressly?
The public util, the type of encroachment of public utility.
So no requirement, so we don't have any additional requirements or anything. So it says that, you know, you ask for a traffic control plan if there is work near traffic. But there isn't one. We don't need to know anything about it and we don't have the requirements of how it would impact. Is that correct?
So the requirements, correct me if I'm wrong, the requirements are in Bellevue code nine dash two dash two, which are referenced in the application. Um, which is the result of the materials received from the applicant. And then the burden of reviewing that the materials meet the standards of the code is upon the department who is bringing the application to council for approval, so public works.
So, okay, so in the ordinance is you have to do it between certain hours or it depends how the, the specifics.
Do you have the arguments available?
Basically, residue, doesn't say anything about.
Well, it doesn't have the, the point. Can we, I mean, shouldn't there be some sort of check with us that?
So the, so, uh, there's two ways to look at this. As a council member, you have the information in your packet. Is the burden of looking up the Bellevue code on the council member or would you like the code put in your packet every time we're reviewing something that references code?
I would like to know what causes the, what the, what the final, I don't know, how do we document that it's even approved? What happens if the system cuts out a yellow?
So
um.
The approval is happening here.
Okay.
And once it is proved, okay, so let me take you back a little bit.
Okay.
We, uh, how many council, uh, uh, meetings ago talked about encroachment permits, correct?
Yes.
And we talked about, um, some encroachment permits being administrative review and not coming to council, which was how our ordinance read and we were not compliant with our ordinance.
Right.
So we amended our ordinance so that certain, uh, encroachment permits became administrative. This encroachment permit falls in the non-administrative bring to council uh category. So that's why it is now coming to council. So this is the process. Application is received, it's reviewed by the department head, the department head is then bringing it to council for approval or deny.
Great, and it only can, it can all be verbal. It doesn't, we don't have like, Brian Houghton, he's got all this notes and he says, I reviewed this and this is my recommendation in case of that. We can, we can do it verbally and written, there's no.
There's nothing at this time in our, uh, we have no policy that states how a department head has to present that information.
Okay.
It is, does not say department head has to provide all written documentation to the council. Um, it is, uh, something we are working on internally that all, uh, items within your council packet come with a uh, department head memo at the front of it. Um, but we do not have anything currently in place within the city of Bellevue policy that, uh, requires our department heads to present information in a certain way. It is at the, uh. Yeah, if, if the council would like to request that, we can continue to work for it, but at this time we do not have, uh, that determination made for department heads.
Okay, so what happens? We get to the day and there's mayhem on Main Street because of traffic issue. Who's accountable for the fact that they did not adhere to, let's say, a, is it intended grade that they can do the work or whatever the requirements are for the traffic control that we establish? Where does that establish the document?
First of all, I'll follow up, like you said, five, it's highways and ITB. Yeah, and do with us.
It's all ITB. They have to get a permit. So just like for a parade every fall, we have to get a permit from ITB for closure and let's say lease note. So once we sign that permit, we have our guidelines that we're supposed to follow. Anything that we do not follow, We can be held liable. They are in the same position. They apply to a permit to the county, they apply to ITB and. That permit is enforced by ITB.
So why do we request traffic?
Because if we were shutting down, okay, uh, Second Street, um, there was a, a group that came in and they removed the large street. Now, they didn't even encroachment permit, but they needed a real closure permit because they had their equipment blocking, um, southbound Second Street.
So you're trying to figure out if they're going to put people through our streets.
We, we, we go out, we go out to the site, identify, you know, how much traffic comes through there, how much are they going to be? In the way of the street. Their vehicles should be all off on the side of the dirt bypass. Um. There are a few buildings on the east side, um, where the veterinary clinic and this couple other small industrial things back there. They should be able to get around them just fine. And those, those businesses also have access through seventy five up front.
And you see in the picture that there is no, like, so that you look at it and you know they're not coming into our, so I understand that. Okay.
Primary need for the site plan is where they're doing the boring, they're working south seventy five.
Um, well, great. Thanks for clarifying that. So we have no control over where they're doing that stuff unless they ended up into our side. So I believe they're not, they're that far. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any questions, Brian? Um, I would assume that since you do collect a hundred dollar fee for this, that that's documented with the receipt. Um, and I would also assume that those encroachment permits, um, are numbered. In some form and fashion and that you do keep a record of those encroachment permits. On the server so that there is documentation that, that such and such a permit was received. There was a receipt, so it was paid and it was, uh, heard on such and such date and it was approved. On that date. So you have created that file in that documentation.
These are the things that public works could be dealing with mostly, so they're, sort of, they're going to pull them through server, they're going to be. Uh, doing all of that, but yes.
So that documentation, that doesn't exist.
Yes, I create a bio folder, it's such encroachments, and then I put a year and then I break them down by month and then I break them down by.
Got it.
Project.
Thank you.
We also have the financial documentation in my system.
So.
Maybe, this, maybe it would be a question, I'd just say, um, it seems pretty straightforward. They're gonna be boring right under Spruce Street if they have to do anything there at all.
On the Spruce Street, they already have the lines underneath it and they have a slack line that could pull through where they're already bored. Um, they want to leave that and they haven't, um. You can see on the north end, right at the base of the bike path, um, there is a vault there. That's a four by four animal, I think it was labeled down there. And they also have a handful, it's another smaller building, the street jam, and they're going to displace it, it already doesn't need connections up.
At that point, yes. And so then, like, as I understand, with Spruce Street north, it's former railroad right away and that's ITB property. Basically. So we're not actually, any jurisdiction over that. I mean, as a city, if it's within the city, we might, but not as the encroachment right away, it's just.
It doesn't cross any of our utilities, um, it doesn't interfere with any of our urbanways, um. It's all the old, uh, railroad.
I would move to wrap the permit for. So, so we're going to install this.
You found a motion on the second?
For Davis?
Yes.
Yeah.
For this. Uh, just to further say, you know, illustrate how Bellevue could assist in, uh, helping prepare arrangements for the traffic with these through our communication channels. Uh, newsletters, social media, website, um, providing communication and notification, uh, that this will be happening, um. Even though we don't have control, we have the ability to communicate. So we will be doing that.
Right.
Moving on to new business. Um, item A, consideration approval ordinance twenty five dash zero five granting the, uh, granting Intermountain Gas Company a ten year extension to its franchise to construct, maintain and operate a gas transmission. And distribution system. Shelley, should make her our treasurer.
Um, yes, you should all have a new package and memorandum that explains the background of how we were started. Uh, in nineteen ninety five, we've got a thirty year contract, franchise agreement that is, it's firing. On May thirty first. So Intermountain Gas continually wants to continue that with the city. So we introduced the, um, council to the ordinance. On April fourteenth and then we were required to publish the ordinance in the newspaper. So now our next step here is to approve the ordinance. Um, and, um, hopefully, well, you can have the option to waive the three readings and read by title. And to authorize the publication by summary. And you have both the summary and the ordinance attached to the memorandum. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm just curious if you find that, was there a certain reason for that length of time? And how the fees changed within the last thirty years? I don't.
No, it's, it is restricted. Um, we're getting the most we can.
Yeah, that was, that was researched.
Yeah, that was researched, sure. Yes, in our attorney prepared the ordinance, uh, summary and ordinance, we worked with Intermountain Gas on this whole thing, so. Um. Hopefully we can just get this passed and continue to receive some franchises.
I think it's just, or this one.
Yes.
Not very, not very, great, very.
Rick, can they combine A, B and C into one motion?
Is C the summary?
Yes.
No. You can, uh.
Re-separate?
Waive, waive the three readings and by, uh, title only and then another motion to publish by summary. After you've voted to approve it. There's really three motions.
So approve first, waive, and then summary.
No, no, read, waive the three readings, read by summary. Vote to approve it, then, and then vote to, uh, publish by summary.
Okay.
I will move to waive the three readings and read ordinance. Twenty five, twenty twenty five dash oh five by title only. So.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I moved to approve ordinance twenty five dash oh.
Somebody needs to read it by title.
Mayor, would you like me to read this ordinance?
Yes, please.
I was only, you know, see with the reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh. Oh, no, I'm just, yes. An ordinance of the city of Bellevue, I have granted to Intermountain Gas Company a ten year extension to its franchise to construct, maintain. And operate a gas transmission and distribution system. Providing for the use of streets and alleys and rules governing the same. Subjecting the grantee to all powers of the city, setting forth the rules of the franchise and grant. Providing for the right of inspection by the city of grantees, setting forth the order of payment to the city. And filing, uh, order in force with the city, requiring grantee to indemnify city and setting forth an agreement not to. Eat, preserving power of eminent domain, providing for surrender of franchise, granting right to salvage. Requiring written acceptance, providing for consent to sale or assignment, providing for payment of publication costs. Setting forth penalties and mortgages, separability and repeal.
Now vote to pass it or not pass it.
I move to approve ordinance twenty five dash oh five again. For Davis? Yes. Not so coincidentally, yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Of the summary of ordinance twenty five dash oh. Thanks. This way. Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
This time, um, I would like to take a ten minute recess. And then we will reconvene, um, to start our budget workshop. Great. What do you have on the cloud? Read yourself. Agreed. Um, out of respect for time, I will, yeah, so I, at this time at eight forty three, I will talk the meeting back to order. Um, out of respect for the preparation time of our department heads, uh, our treasurer and our public works director. Um, I'd like to get started on the workshop, workshop. Um, and we can kind of, if there's a organic stopping point or, um, a deterioration in discussion. Um, we have many budget workshops scheduled, um, and we can continue to move on. So. We will go ahead and get started. Uh. Starting off the discussion of the workshop by, uh, setting the intention that tonight is, uh, we are not trying to solve all of the problems of the. Water and wastewater budgets. Um, this is our first touch. This is our initial, uh, discussion and starting to understand. Uh, the, these two enterprise fund budgets. It's an opportunity to ask questions for clarifications from our treasurer and the public works director. Um, and it is a time for us to, uh. Look at where we are, uh, with these two. Two basically budgets right now, um, knowing that this is not the final. So. With that, I will, um, hand the floor over to Shelley, should make her our treasurer.
Thank you, Shelley, should make her treasurer. Um, like Mayor just, um, stated, this is just a first book. We're not looking, um. There are a lot of, um, several numbers in there that I cannot finalize at this point in time. But we are close in many areas as to what we're looking at. So this will give you an idea of the process and going through this whole budgeting. So we're going to first. Take a quick overview of revenues and then we're going to do a quick little overview of payroll. And then we're going to look at, uh, operating costs. And then we're going to look at capital, um, costs. And then kind of a, a, a summary of what these numbers are showing us right now. And then it will change coming back to you next time. With more complete information as time goes on. So, um. I would encourage you, if you have a question, um. Just ask as we go through the process here. So let's start. We should be all on page one, water fund. Okay, then you can see we've given you the twenty three budget, twenty four actuals, twenty four budget. And where we are halfway through this fiscal year, there may be a couple of blanks. I think there's a highlight there on grants that. Um, I need to pinpoint what that number is at this point. Um, I am working on, just so you know, I am working on. Uh, a way to report the water bond in complete form to you from the beginning. My, my. What I'm having to work through is the transition and two systems. And this project started before the data transferred to Casell. So I am working to get that data into Casell so that I can provide reporting from this point forward. On that project as it develops, you know, so I'm getting there on this. So that's why if you look at your grant income, the blue highlighted column is the estimated numbers right now. It says three point two million. That number is a, a total guesstimate at this point. I won't refine that number. That's how much we've actually. Um, already received in this fiscal year versus what we plan to receive next fiscal year. Does that make sense? Um, going down. The bulk of the income for water comes from water user fees. And that number there that's plugged in right now is, is based off of, um. Kind of what we budgeted for this fiscal year, based on the numbers coming in. Based on last year, we did a five percent decrease in fees, so. Um, we are going to have more discussion about that in more detail after we overview all of this. Okay? Um, other income for water is, um. Rather small, but all of the water meter and water vault is offset by expenses and capital, so those zero each other out. Because our customers are, are charged for those expenses. We incur them and then we charge them to reimburse us. So that two thousand and three thousand for water meter stuff. Um, water cap fees, um. Are adjusted as to how much we might, um, get in terms of, um. New applications. You never know exactly how many you're ever going to get. So. Water on and off. Based on, we're at six forty for half the year now. We budgeted two thousand, so just about two thousand in there. So that leaves us with a total income of three six nine three. Uh, three point six nine three minus the three point two for the grant. So, um. A kind of a net revenue of four hundred and ninety three thousand for water. Any questions about any of them? It's pretty simple.
Why was, or why isn't there any carryover in that?
Carryover, I don't put it until the very end, until we have to. We want to try to get these budgeted without carryover. That's the goal.
But there's always, isn't there always a carryover? So you did, like. You'd budget it, so you're just saying, i- in essence, when you're budgeting, that you balance the budget without carryover and the carryover is just there.
That would be the goal. It has not happened in many, many, many years. In fact, the last couple of years. Have, we have relied on carryover less than historical. So the city has, uh, and this is going to come up in our little conversation a little bit about our, our user fees. Uh, we have relied too much on carryover. And in fact, carryover for water last year, um, was reduced. We used more of that moving up. So what it basically does is take from reserves.
Shelley, can I ask about the water meter and unit piece? Is that for the, all the, like, water meter, like, units that we have that we have to turn on?
It's for when a new applicant comes in and they're getting new service and they have to buy a water meter and.
Okay.
Yeah, and those are the ones that get charged back to the, so that's why it's income here, but it's also a capital out.
Okay.
Anything else before we go to payroll? Okay, so payroll summary here. Um. We are rebuilding this department. So historical years, you'll see back in twenty three, um, salaries and wages were at one fifty five, five eighty three. They dropped significantly for the last several years. We did a bunch of eighty eight thousand because we've had. Um, forty percent of a public works director. Um, before we thought that was going to be a manager, but it turned into public works director. He had one full-time apprentice. That's what that salary covers. So for fiscal year twenty six, um, we have added, let me look at something. Have added, um, a, uh, operator, an operator position. So that's what. An operator position, so that's why the increase to salaries is up one forty seven six eight six. So then we'll have. Chris at forty percent. One apprentice at full-time and one operator at full-time, wanna make any other comments on that? That's your question. All of the balance of that payroll corresponds with. The salaries, it's all based on percentages, I calculate all that in perpetuity. So I don't have my information to accurately do workers comp yet, so that's gonna change. We don't have, we are pursuing a new quote for. Possible insurance, health insurance for employees, we don't know if we can get a better deal through triple I A, I don't know if you've heard of them, but. We are maybe just looking into that, we don't have that information yet, so we can't compare. To know, but so those numbers are all a little fluid. So then we have a total payroll of two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars for the year, any questions? Okay, then we get into operating costs, so we go from admin fees on down. Conjunctive management, as we explained before, is the. The attorneys that work on water rights for us, that that's the make you broadly, you see on your payables on the. We've reduced contract labor to fifty thousand because of rebuilding staffing, we're gonna rely less on contract labor.
On the conjunctive management, it also includes our obligations with the groundwater management plan. So for each acre foot that we pump, we owe. Twenty five dollars to. Improvements and then another ten dollars to cloud seeding infrastructure and. So the. One of those improvements for like town lining and water delivery around groundwater management area. And then the other one is for cloud seed structure to get more. Contract labor. We are still working with some contractors, some, one that's more or less part-time employee, but not. Work for us full-time due to his previous. He's retired, so he's getting his Percy already and he can't have a full-time job. With the city as an employee that would give him Percy benefits, so he contracts with us. But I see those as we get our staff trained up and take over more of the operations. Have less reliance on contractors. This could also be used for. We just had a water service line break on six the Nash last week. We had to call in funds for construction, they excavated and helped us fix the leak and then. Put in the gravel bedding and got the road fixed and we'll finish the road area in the next week.
Okay, moving on to the next page. Going on down, I'm looking liability insurance, I just got the quote for our city liability insurance, just so you're aware. Last year it doubled from thirty five to seventy, this year it's going from seventy to eight, so another ten grand. I have not had time to spreadsheet that out, but that is allocated between general fund, water and sewer. Partial amount, so that number will change. On down the line. Most, everything I do. I look at our actual costs on everything from office supplies to small tools and equipment and all of that. And really try to see where we're at, working with the department head on what their needs are. Moving forward, telephone is telephone, well, it is what it is, but it costs.
Supplies are twenty three thousand year to date, but we only budget ten. Then utilities. It says our year to date is already fourteen thousand, that we only budgeted fifteen. Is that appropriate? An appropriate number and why are the utilities?
Yeah, all utilities are high this year, so they're all under budgeted from last year. I can't tell you why other than utilities must be up.
Hey, base rates last year.
Yeah, so they're all up and you're gonna see that when we get into the general fund too. They're all up, so yes, that's a good thought, we should look at that number and possibly up that. Any other questions about any of that? So we have a total operating in this draft of three hundred nine thousand seven hundred fifty one thousand for the year. For water. So then capital. We plug in thirty eight five for construction equipment. So that could be in the general, anything, any construction improvements that happen with the water. Again, that three point two will adjust to what that actual number is, once I get those numbers all put together. Going to the next page, the leases. That number reflects all of our, remember our presentation last week, all of our long-term leases that we're making payments on.
So this can also include the share of.
Chris was trying to budget for with a new grade. Is that in there?
It will, because it didn't have, I didn't take full account for the letter that is wishing or deciding that right now. It's gonna be seventeen five.
From water?
That's seventy five, we need water. That's enough.
In addition to the Tony. For auto. Probably twenty three, four, forty plus seventeen five, right? I think part of it's already there, it's twenty three, four, forty plus seventeen five. But that's the only new one since last year, yeah. Street construction and water is basically for minor repair or.
Street construction is, yes, if we have to tear up the line or like. So the one we have to go across the street and there's a, it'd be a two foot by ten foot ash needs to be put in, that's where that.
And then we have the water meter vault lumped into one expense category of five, which the income for that was up above. So we get to total capital. With the. With the water bond of three point three oh four seven hundred, take out the three point two, so capital of a hundred and four thousand seven hundred dollars. So for total expense, including the bond. The water project, three point nine oh three three six nine minus that. Use seven oh three three six nine for a total expense. In the water budget, so if you look down below in the little blue box, that horizontal one. I've taken total revenue down there and all the expense categories. So we've got four nine three, seven oh three three sixty nine basically, and we have a two hundred and ten thousand dollar difference. That's what we have to figure out how to make those match, that's our goal in the long run, is they have to match. When we go to a budget. Any questions? If you flip one more page, in your payroll. One of the things it does, one of the things that you as a council have to consider. Is whether you're going to grant COA increases for staff. Last year there was no COA, I don't think there was any COA the year prior to that. There has not been, possibly never for another couple of years. So the numbers that are currently in that payroll reflect this COA, I just start there so you can see. And in the water fund, it affects it by three thousand two hundred and sixty one dollars for the year. To do a three percent increase for staff, now that doesn't include for new staff, that's only existing.
Staff. That doesn't include the closed new staff?
No, because it ran new, so. So their starting salary, yeah, this is only for existing staff. So then I give you a yearly comparison of the payroll, this for year twenty three, twenty four, twenty four actuals. Or we're at twenty five and so on, so. I hope that's simple enough to follow. Any questions on water?
Thank you, Shelley. Before we go on to wastewater. I think that's important for us to have a bit of discussion about our fees, since we see that there's us. Right now, what's budgeted and the anti-corruption union, we have a two hundred and ten thousand dollar. A lot of us last year. And new council members have expressed a concern of. Are we getting these fees, you know, how are we coming up with a number that we're charging people? How are we making the decision on if we should increase fees or not? The last couple of years, the four point nine nine percent increase. Felt to some to be a bit arbitrary, so myself, Shelley and Chris spent a lot of time. Trying to kind of understand how those fees were derived, right? And where we get, we process to derive the fees is in our ordinance, so if you flip some pages in your book.
And I apologize, I did not have time to label your tabs, I will get them labeled for lunchtime.
We're in your Article A, water user fees, rates and charges. There is a section in there, eight dash one A dash three. That refers to our monthly user rates and charges. In particular, where we have. Where you derive, how these calculations. Have come to be are under D, user classes and basis for rates. You've got item one and two, which create quite a bit of definition there. You have the class, the classes of non-meter class rate, your meter class rate, your bond user class rate. And your circuit breaker class rate. In our research and many hours spent comparing numbers. And processed with other cities throughout the valley. We have. Found quite a bit of flaw in our ordinance and in the way our calculations are being done. At this time. The total water cost of the department's annual budget. Is to be divided by the total number of equivalent density units, EDUs, served by the city water system. And in doing that calculation, we have determined that our EDUs are one thousand four hundred and twelve. And so if you were to take, and this assessment is to be done yearly, based on our ordinance. And you take our total budget and divide it by the EDUs, that's how we would derive for our ordinance what our rate should be.
Do you want me to write that on there?
We can, once we get there, however. The connections that we're billing for are one thousand nineteen. Where that discrepancy is, is EDUs are calculated using. The equivalent user schedule, which you see in E of your ordinance, section E of your ordinance. And so. We are. Operating at a fee deficit every year based on how our ordinance is directing us to calculate our fees. So what I think is important is for us to. Recognize that, understand that and come up with a. A solution that is more. Stand for our residents, is more equivalent of what the share of the burden of the fee should be. And a correct representation of the calculation. The city of Haley takes their budget divided by their connections. I, the history of the EDUs, I'm not sure. Where that came from, but we went as far back as twenty years ago and that's how the calculation has been done. Also, in addition to that, the meter class rate. Allows for sixty five hundred gallons of usage. Before the meter rate of a dollar fourteen starts being charged per one thousand gallons. And that is, that was done by resolution. That never used to be twenty four thousand gallons, it is now for at least sixty five hundred. So with that, I wanted to start workshopping the discussion around fees. Because as we see, we have a discrepancy of income. And first draft need of expenditure to run the water department. So. That's where I wanted to workshop with Castle, run through some numbers. And, you know, understand if you feel. That the way we feel that there should be amendments, the ordinance to better come up with a appropriate application system. So that our fees are covering the cost of running the water.
Well, I won't disagree with you, we can tell that the numbers, you know, carryovers have been necessary. Because you can do the math and at least what we knew and with the drinking water. Eric was using for EDU numbers or adding for the. I would also suggest that it's a larger conversation because we have failed to, in a lot of ways, generate the type of big development. With the customers that could have used this transition a little bit, I think there's. Some other components of the department, of our services in general, that should be part of this conversation, if there's any hope. To be able to have a sellable proposition, I mean, this could be a considerable. Change, may or may not be, right? And you can't just say, well, certainly you can, but I think it's far more appropriate to say, we've seen this and we're spending time on this and these are some of the other things. There will be customer service, there will be this, and these are some of the other things that come hand in hand with probably funding this department, right? So I don't think it can be a user fee impacting, especially in the person's terms that the user should will or expect. Should every, should change something.
I would like to point out that as we were doing some of our research, we noticed that. Everybody knows what happened in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, with the downturn, we did not take any of the increases from two thousand eight till two thousand seven. So when you're not keeping up with the cost of doing business and you're not keeping up with your maintenance and your preventive maintenance and you have an asset management plan. And you let some just deteriorate for a decade. And now you're trying to catch back up to where you are on costs to do business. I just want to point that out there that this is a sort of thing that. It's not catching up with us and we need to figure out a way to get back on track so we aren't having to raise every year.
In this discussion, this, you know, it is not necessarily for raising the rates. The discussion is, how are we recalculating the rates in order to spread the burden equally? Amongst either the connections, presidential versus commercial. You know, when you do your EDU calculations, we have commercial businesses that have twenty, fifteen to twenty EDUs associated with them. But they're being one connected. Plus meter rates, potentially or non-meter rates, and so there's a potential discrepancy there where this doesn't mean an automatic increase to.
Right, it's a starting, it's a starting point, I can totally address that.
Yeah, just to make sure that the rhetoric that's being communicated, not just out into the world, it's not, we need to have fees.
No, no. Well, the understanding, the understanding, we found a certain point, but we do need to be aware, as Chris was just said, there are. It's harder than a small, I mean, we suddenly bump up and suddenly say, oh, look, we found this certain ten thousand dollar here, just that was. So that's all, no, I, it's a great place to start.
With that, I feel that that could be, wanna, basically our next workshop. Could be theme of what we're diving into a little bit more as our fees. I don't feel, I feel like I want you to take this away and digest it and start to look at it and really read the ordinance. The ordinance has a lot of room. The ordinance has a lot of room for improvement, and we could study a little bit what other spaces within our valley and within the state are doing to see how we clarify that. So, for the sake of time, I feel that that could be an appropriate use of time between now and our next workshop, is to do some internal research and studying, and also we provided some documentation from either Public Works or the Director to guide in that workshop discussion. So, my question to council would be, what information besides what you have here? Reviewing of the ordinance, looking at current revenues. What other information would be effective before the next workshop in order to visit, or which kind of revisit fees?
You know, enterprise funds like this, you know, that we've been in with the water and sewer systems are fairly well-defined entities, and some of the things that we might not, as you're, for certain, even just keep the lights on or whatever, but there are those different priorities.
Two second question. How are we being charged, right? I don't, you know, I, I was, uh, some business were not charging anyone.
Uh, I know what you're referring to, and the clarification on that was in regards to meter reading, and we have clarified some of the meter reading corrections. So that has been remedied in terms of the meter reading discrepancies, corrections. Yes.
Well, I was just, I mean, it's a bit of these enterprise funds, our businesses, they're structured that way because you're selling product. So I think that can be self-sustaining like that through that product, but then you fall aside from product calls, as well as understanding some of the other ratios, you know, that are used. So I think that would be advantageous for us to be a little knowledgeable about using it as an enterprise fund and understanding the business drivers within the, or, or understanding these are customers. And that we're selling to customers, there are certain things, and these are potentially new fee schedules that may not change costs, but that need to be better defined, is what you're talking about with this sort of. But there are pretty robust.
So, kind of definitions and information in regards to enterprise funds and the functionality of enterprise funds.
There's some good study out in Massachusetts, doesn't really help us. You know, just folks that are pretty welcome, you know, for us to take away, if you're trying to rebuild things. You know, a lot of these folks have already done it, would have already identified some of the concerns that you can deal with.
Is it possible to, like, even assess? But I don't know that it can be done now because of that, but when I think about like the local home park or the Riverside RV park, are, are we, are we properly charging? I know for a while, it was going to charge more.
Well, we're, we're, when I'm into that, we're aware of certain places that have been undercharged historically and why they should be so. Like the RV park, we have, we have modular malls, and we have symbolized throughout town, they pay a full user rate. Why shouldn't those give the set of malls down there paid the same for the user rate?
Well, and it doesn't, it's not a, what I shouldn't, it's, it even allows it in there. If it says, I guess, I'll make absolute points.
Still, I would point you to where the discrepancy lies is in the equivalent user rate, this schedule referring to non-meter rates, and then your meter class rate, and the, and among base fee and that the RV park is on a meter. And so there's just discrepancies about how we're charging base fees and meter fees and EDUs. So the way that this is reading, they're just paying a base fee plus a meter rate. And the EDUs are not taken into consideration at this time because of the meter class rate that they are offering.
And are they, is that meter readable? Is that a, is that, is that meter red?
That was a couple of projects about a three, it used to go to a whole digital reason, but definitely the meter and the location. They get very challenging to get it dug out of the south, to be able to get down and see it. So to do what they've been doing in the past is do averages. But they, they could reach to the salary.
So, yes. So, for the sake of time, if you have any burning questions or things that would help to guide in that discussion, please email them. I think that what Public Works can provide is kind of a spreadsheet of what we've found so far and how our EDU package, which these came about, dividing residential and commercial. What we use to derive this information can be supplied to you. And we just have to do a little bit of privacy protection. That's the most things to make sure that gets to you. That will be one of our deliverables. If there's anything else, please email us. Okay? I'm going to have Shelley do a quick run-through on wastewater. I just want to identify the same issue about sewer user fees to exist a little, it's, yes, so, go ahead.
In the draft fees for sewer, I did go to 1.220, 1.220, because at half year, we're at 610,000. So, we are, you're doing better. Just where we anticipated, so. Anyways, so we have a total income of 1.240 there, going down into payroll. So, for wastewater, we have 50% of Chris's Public Works Director's salary and our apprentice. And then, in that budget is hiring an operator. And the goal with the operator is to get some of the licensing that we need to move forward with reducing contract labor even more and bringing that all into our personnel. So, if there's something you want to gather. So, in the salaries, that would be 162,479. So it's a, not that much more than what we had budgeted this year. For a total of about 220,670, moving forward payroll for wastewater. Going on down. Admin fees, our reimbursements to the general fund book, direct costs associated with administering water and sewer fund services. That's the 194 of the 300, but it went up 800, 80,000. What does that do? Marina's salary, she processes, she works pretty much 100% in water and sewer.
Oh, yeah, this is payroll of the general.
Reimbursement.
It's reimbursement, that's where you look at it.
Correct. And costs of postage for our water sewer manings.
But they don't have $80,000.
Yes, because she's been moved over now because I have done a more in-depth study. I brought those out.
Oh, is that so? Okay, okay.
Could you also look at like invoicing that Marcy does? So she's taking on, she takes on some water bar, I just said 20, where percent on Marcy? But she's doing all the billing and invoicing.
30% on Marcy. It's a little bit of Clark time. It's some of my time. I spend a lot of time on water.
So we would just, we would see this have the deficits of something else has gone down. General fund admin has gone down.
Yeah, this is to reimburse that, loose admin. And it's been, frankly, it's been a little low. I think I've had it more accurate. And that still could change a little bit. So, I just did that today in the middle of everything else we did today, so.
So basically, $400,000 in personnel?
No, I'd say more than personnel.
Okay.
That's all a lot of hard costs. Yeah. Coffees, coffee release, I mean, all this stuff that, and then is used for water and sewer as well as general.
Okay, and I think that's why I'd like to see the, have the data export so I can link all of that if I can.
But that's mostly, I know it's hard to do on paper. Contract labor in wastewater, 75? Yeah. About this being fixed, we'll talk anything on that.
No, we're getting close to being able to see my branding plan online. We're still waiting on several parts that are completing the project. We are looking at the contract, we'll give you a way out here to help us reestablish everything, treat membranes, and bring the plant online. They were originally in one second time with Keller and brought it online back in 2000. Our contractors are still going to be helping us with sampling and just the activities, but they're going to be pulling down their roles and reducing the number of hours that we're taking. Over a considerable amount of the work that they've been doing on the water side, we're trying to be the same on the wastewater side. Now, we, instead of having them doing the rounds, we're doing ground scaling. Instead of doing, okay, so we're doing the locates. So there's operations that we're already taking to introduce our, our need for these contracts.
Interest expense is on the wastewater moment that we got. I, well, the insurance stat numbers really don't change. Oh, merchant fees, that could go away. For now, charging our customers, I thought I had that deleted off.
And then change merchant fees to put it on short-term.
I'll take, we have to be something that's not long for these pictures. How would, uh, repairs and maintenance, how do they go from 250,000 with no actual speaking here? Because I've broken it down, and the general is go to the next several lines. We have repair maintenance equipment, we have repair maintenance autos, we have repair maintenance for actually wastewater repairs. So it's broken down into four, four categories as such.
Back with Max and the administrative.
Yeah, just for she was. That way, mostly it just gets charged to admin, just.
We can go line by line, not, so operating expenses.
Yeah.
Totalling 640.
So again, power here, we're, we're kind of on track with power here. We were more off basing the water.
But that's a false number too, because the point I had been running to the client is the water gets powered. That we have, so. I don't know why we're still up down with the team, we've been doing a lot of work down there, main operations haven't been, I think, so.
So we need to change that. Okay.
See, it was like 65 actuals from 24, they'll drop to 30,000, 33, so probably gonna have to back up. She got 65.
So, as this is written right now, 640,914 for operating expenses. So let me go on with capital. So, but 150 construction equipment, the leases, the long-term leases at 35. Like to be able to have a little bit of something there in case we find a piece of equipment that is in need, that we need to purchase. I, last, this last year, we didn't have it budgeted, but we bought a, you know, a street spot, a snow blower or something, things like that. The loan payments, so total capital 540,507 for a total expense of 1,410, 100. So down to the summary. 240, 400 revenue, 1,401,000 expense, a difference of 170,000 basically. So, these numbers are not, in my opinion, far off for starting place because it, it's all it's fluid at the moment. Any questions there? So again, I did a payroll page that shows that a lot for the current unit for fees. Little cost, roughly 35, 3600 dollars if you did it for one, or.
And is there a certain amount of time that you need to report before they go? Like, like if you're an investor, who cares?
It's all, I don't know.
There, I have to check the policy memo. They have something like that of this. I think because of the nature of budgeting season when it falls, it's, it's, it starts to incur anyways. But we'd love to have policy memos that states.
I just want, we just, it's this, you know, I think South Florida, China, Alberta, we passed out to the first year.
So then we have also put the sewer ordinance, which is very similar to the water ordinance. That should be almost your second-to-last tab there. And it would be a good idea if you would read that early before the discussion.
So, my intention would be, in this discussion, Shelley, that our next funded session, which is not attached to a council meeting, again focuses on water and wastewater, in particular the P and B user fees. And that would be the opportunity to then digest all this information and come back with questions to dive in line by line if necessary, but also starting session work. And revenue, in essence, top line, so we can figure out if those ideas are.
And I will have revised versions for that. The gap could go down, it could go up, depends on what we, yes, that's for you. I would request that if you want to take something, take it out of your book so that I can fill your book for the next meeting.
So taking your book.
Yeah, so you may take out of it any that you want, but it's nice if I could have it in there for you in the next. Unless you have another way, you guys want to do this.
Call that budget quota shot. Need an opportunity. All in favor? Thank you all.
Thank you.